Hi, I'd like to welcome everybody. I'm Councilor Maitland. I'll be chairing today's session of the Committee of the Hall. I will now call a meeting to order. Mayor Cameron wishes to make a statement prior to the approval of agenda. Mayor Cameron, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that. On behalf of the municipality, I'd like to express sincere condolences to the family, friends, and coworkers that were impacted by the death that occurred on August 22nd. Flowers and cards were sent to the family on behalf of the municipality.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. That the agenda of the Committee of the Hall meeting held September 8th, 2025, be approved as presented. Can I please have a mover and a secondary? Moved?
Seconded.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? The closure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof, does any member have pecuniary interest for any items on the agenda? And if so, what is the general nature of that interest? Seeing none, we will move on to the public question period. To committee. Public question period is an opportunity for residents who ask questions directed to the committee regarding items on the agenda only. Questions asked during this section will be considered by committee during the item on the agenda that it pertains to. Just as a reminder, as well, that individuals are limited to one question each, and it is a total of five minutes for question period. Does any member of the public have a question for committee? Yes?
I'm concerned about the ATVs. And I want to know why we have the ATVs in the first place.
I believe they have to state their name and address.
Sorry?
Name and address, please.
George Hogan.
Okay.
Address? Somebody's writing really fast. 112, 115, sorry, Coller Hill Road.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, it's 112. I've only lived there five years, you're great. It takes a long time for you to remember, and all that.
Now, the clerk, do you want the question repeated?
Just no concern.
Well, I suppose, I've got a number of questions, but apparently I only get to add one. Why are we allowing ATVs to roam our streets and disturb our neighborhoods? And I'll just qualify that question. I live right in the middle of it. I live right in the corner of Brock Street, Charlotte, and Coller Hill. And we get it, I'm now getting it from all directions. They're violating the stop signs every time. Last thing I was here, we were discussing it, and somebody said only 5% of our problem, only 5% have an identifiable license plate. I have a camera, and I'd be happy if any of the council members want to see video of these roving bandits on their ATVs. I guess I'm finished with this.
I appreciate your comment.
I only get one question, right?
Correct. Is there any others?
Yep. Peter Cornelisa, 425 Brock Street East. I'm also right at the corner of Brock, Charlotte, and Coller Hill. I would like to know specifically what's going to be done to prevent ATVs from coming down from Scotch Line and into the village. We get a number of them, and they just go racing up that hill. And when you have five or more of those big monster things racing up that hill, your piece is gone.
They're racing each other.
Yes.
I appreciate the comment. Any questions? We'll address that at the time. Is there any others? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next section. Motion for consideration that the Committee of the Hall received for information, the motions for consideration document as presented. Can I please have a mover and a secondary? Moved? Moved? A second?
Seconded.
Seconded? Any questions or comments from committee? No, I'll call a vote. All in favor? Okay, passed? Consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine or no longer require further discussion and are received for information in one motion. The exception is to the rule is that a member may request that one or more items be pulled for discussion and voted on separately. Does any member wish to separate any items from the consent agenda? Yes?
Item 6.5 was a public consultation, UCLG Growth Management Strategy.
6.5? Any others? Okay. So now we, clerk, we will go with the ones that are?
Do the remainder of the consent agenda, and then we'll receive for information, item 6.5.
That the remainder of the dissent agenda, the accepted information presented, do I have a mover and a secondary?
I'll move.
Mover? Second by the mayor? Any questions or comments from committee? All in favor? Passed? Now, we'll ask, I guess we'll have discussion on 6.5, and I'll give the floor to Councilor Ground.
Do I move a separate motion for it, or it's already on the floor?
We can get a mover and a secondary to discuss it.
Okay. We'll ask for a mover discussion, item 6.5? Do you have a secondary?
Second.
Second? All right, you may have the floor.
Yeah, so I started reading through this. There's not quite much of a timeline. It's the growth strategy, growth management strategy from the county, which we haven't received a lot of information to our council. So I was wondering if, part of it is, first of all, I'm going to encourage all residents to look at it and send your comments to the planning advisor at the county. Secondly, there is, there's also, I noticed that there is a survey meant for landowners who are interested in getting designations or have their properties considered, or whether they're planning on any sort of development. And it's supposed to, it's private, I don't know if we can get information, whether those applications are going to be made public. What are the rules regarding council members, both on individual municipalities and on the county council? And the other thing is, I noticed here, it says, consultants will meet with local municipalities, technical advisory group, and seek input from stakeholders. If we can get information, maybe in time for the regular meeting, when these consultants will meet with the local municipalities, unless our county councillor has any information on that, on when the information will be coming to the local municipality, and what local municipalities will have, will be able to have an impact. There's a
Did Alaska represent if you have anything to add?
No, it's a, it's a, it's a living document. Their purpose is to collect information. There's been no information brought to county council, so as it moves forward, information will be supplied.
Okay, I just said there was a, the council reactivated the GMS on July 24th, 2025. Presumably, there was an item on the county agenda at the time. I don't and I'm not going to put you on the spot here, if you, if you remember, maybe if, if the, if the county council member remembers and wants to update us on the next meeting as well, along with the information from the staff. I'm good with that, too.
So what you see here is what the meeting was about, to move forward, to collect information and, and create the opportunity for input through the United Counties.
Okay. And CIO, are you able to reach out for additional information?
I think there has been information sharing between our flooding department and the county on a number of occasions, so they're looking towards what we have in our queue for development and what we anticipate are growth. We have a lot of that collected, and we'll be collecting that through the Development Charge Study as well. So we do already have a lot of information gathered, and whatever we have, we share with them. But the survey is basically for things that we don't know, that people have planned, so it's a long-range plan for the future. Now, I think it was put on hold. I think from what I understand, it was registered or scheduled to be done by now, but because of a number of factors to the south of us, they put it on hold for a bit, but now they've decided to start it up again. That's my understanding of the status of it.
I can add to that. It was a document that was supposed to be moved forward earlier, but it was temporarily put on hold. And this is all staff-driven. So it hasn't come to the table. It was just, it was just, if there was interest at the county council, like we do here at our councils, to move forward, and staff is moving forward with collecting information. A lot of information is already relevant, but they want new input and direction, and it will eventually come to all the municipalities within the United Counties, including the county, when the document is satisfied and is closed.
Yes, just a question for the CIO. Do we have staff assigned to monitor the, this process? The two guys? So this is an invitation to the public, and we have staff that are looking at it, so it would be informed. Yes, it goes.
It works. Thank you. Okay. I just wanted to add one thing I noticed, too. It's on our website as well. I noticed that it's one of the first items, it's the first notification item on our website, so and encourage the public to, to open it up and send their comments.
All right. If there's nothing further, I will, I guess we'll ask, we accept that for information? Can I have a mover?
Oh, we already know.
You already, oh, okay, I'll, we'll vote on. Do you have a vote? All in favor? All right. Passed? We'll move on to number seven, delegations. 7.1, Rita Community Health Services Declaration of Food Insecurity. That the Committee of the Hall received for information, the delegation from Rita Community Health Services regarding declaration of food insecurity. Do I have a mover and a secondary? Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Left in there? I will now ask Michelle Bellows to come and provide the delegation to the committee.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm Michelle Bellows. I'm the CEO of Rita Community Health Services. And normally, this would be Joanne Franny, who I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, are familiar with, but she's sort of off-duty at the moment. And she's asked me to come and speak, and thank you so much for taking the time to listen today. Who has the slides? You? If I have not, we're good. Perfect. Thank you. So today, we're looking to the village of Merrickville, Wolford, to continue to support and demonstrate your leadership to help us formally pass and to formally pass a motion declaring food insecurity an emergency. We certainly know that over the last number of months, there's been several municipalities who've taken action towards this and have passed a motion supporting this. So we know that hunger is real, and it is in our communities, and we know that about one in seven households are food insecure. There's lots of data out there suggesting some people are paying up to $350 every couple of weeks to try and feed a family of two adults and two children. And we certainly know that post-COVID, we've seen many increases in the needs in our communities. So we know the living wage as well falls short in thousands for thousands of people within our communities. The living wage is $21.65 an hour, and that really, I know that we ourselves have checked ourselves to make sure that our staff within our organization are living above, are, are earning higher than a living wage. However, we know that that, it's not everywhere, and we know that the minimum wage certainly isn't the living wage for our communities. I'm, we also know that about 7% of the tax base here in, in Merrickville, Wolford are living in poverty, so they're struggling to meet even the basic needs. So most of you know our food cupboard program here in Merrickville, which is so well-supported by the community. There's such generosity between the community itself, the organizations, businesses. It is truly amazing. And we know that we have community members who support each other informally outside of accessing our food cupboard. We also know that the food cupboard is not a long-term solution for poverty. We recognize that. And we really, we'll be punching up to the government to hopefully be able to support some of the requests that have gone out, whether it's increase in OW payments, ODSP, and other pieces of government support for, for persons. So we know that there's a large geography in Merrickville, and a lot of it is rural, and we know that people have difficulty with transportation. We also know that this is a sample. I don't know if anybody has been over to visit our food cupboard. I would invite folks to come and see us. We're just undergoing a significant renovation over there right now, and we hope to be, we will be open on Monday. And now that's recorded. We have to make that happen. So the food cupboard originally came to be when providers saw that their clients actually were needing food, and they were bringing food in themselves personally and providing it to families. And since then, we've certainly grown, and we've had the support of the community. So in July this year, we just pulled the stats. We've served more than 100 clients, and that includes families, adults, and children. And you can see we've had a steady growth. Of course, during COVID, we, we saw a decline because we couldn't actually have people come through our doors, and we had to work in really creative ways during that time. But we are continuing to see an increase in the clients that are using our, using our programs and services. We also know that it's bigger than our food cupboard. So the paramedics have a great program, and this is a couple of our team members supporting the paramedics and packing up to deliver food to folks who are food insecure. And we also know that within the village itself, there's many, many opportunities for people to come together for a meal, to socialize, to be able to connect. I will just pull a couple of them out, the Pay It Forward Program, which is new in Main Street, which is really, really quite lovely. We have the sharing table, social kitchen. We ourselves do our therapy, which we're ramping up pretty significantly because it's really been so successful, and with that, people can socialize as well as come and gather and have a snack or a hot drink or a cool drink. So this is just a sample of one of the letters that has been sent to the federal government from Brockville, and it really is about a resolution regarding food insecurity in our region and doing a call for a motion that is actually identifying it. So our ask today is to acknowledge food insecurity is a province-wide issue, and we'd like to have a formal motion declaring food insecurity an emergency. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Michelle. Is there any questions in the committee?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Chair, to our delegation. How do we ensure that the people in the rural area, you mentioned transportation complications. How do we ensure that they, that they're receiving the service?
So folks that are connected to Rita Community Health Services, we actually support transportation for clients, whether it's to come to our food cupboard, or clients need transportation to our commission's office or specialty appointment. That is one of the pieces that we've recognized, and we are more than prepared to support people to come to us and as well to help them get home with, with what we've provided.
Follow-up question, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was wondering if you'd be still satisfied in accomplishing what your objective is today with the removal of the word emergency? And the reason why I bring that up is when when a council declares an emergency, it enacts a whole series of follow-ups, right? So emergency management and financial and so on and so forth. I think with the declaration that was by Brockville, they had also removed the word emergency and, and supported declaring a food insecurity, which is something that I would be in support of. The word emergency for a municipal standard, you know, enacts all other successions when a council does that. So I'm wondering if that's something that, you know, would satisfy what you're trying to accomplish and also not put the municipality in, in a situation where the word emergency could be received in a different manner?
Absolutely. I fully understand. If I use the word emergency, the same thing happens, but just not on the scale. So I would fully support the removal of the word emergency from the request of the motion. And I would love to read it out to you without the word emergency. Ongoing support for food insecurity. And I, thank you.
It's just, I appreciate that.
No, I fully understand.
Because, you know, under the Emergency Measures Act for municipalities, when you use the word emergency, it, it it enacts.
Food insecurity, so the motion could go forward as declaring food and declaring food insecurity in the Merrickville, Wolford region.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
In the municipality.
In the municipality.
I'm not sure how my fellow members feel about that, but that was just something that I, the word emergency, sort of
It's a trigger.
It was a trigger for other things, because, sure, just.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, very similar to the mayor's concern by saying declaring an emergency. It implies actions that we're going to take, and if the intention is that we're expressing our concern at different levels of government, we kind of cheapen the, the, the word emergency. I fully support declaring food insecurity a concern, that it exists in our community, that we're in support trying to solve it, and that we should be expressing back support at different levels of government. So, yeah, I would, I would support the alteration in the motion.
Any other comments from the rest of the council? I agree with what's been said. Okay, so then we can get sort of a by-word direction for staff to bring that forward to the to our council, ready to council meeting? All right, any other comments?
Yeah, just one question. In your presentation, Michelle, you quoted 7% of our community is living in poverty. Do you know if that number has changed significantly over time?
So I believe that was 2024 information that came from the last report. I'm happy to go back and look at the 2020. I would look at probably the 2019 report because we had COVID in the middle there, and I'm happy to send that along.
I'd appreciate.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, it makes a suggestion. On CJH News last week, there was a report on, on people's incomes versus the rent that they're facing. And I think it was suggested, please don't quote me on this, but I think it was like $39.82 an hour is what one person would have to make in order to afford a one-bedroom apartment. So, you know, that, those numbers could be quite more significant in 2025 than in 2024. It's just, you can relate that to affording shelter and food that probably coexist.
Absolutely. You add in heat and travel.
All the other things.
Yes.
All right, if there's no further questions or comments, I'd like to thank Michelle for your, for your presentation and your ongoing effort. It's really, sometimes it may feel unnoticed, but everybody's watching. We really appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much, and as I truly do, would love for you to come and see our new space. It's not new, but it's certainly going to be bigger and brighter and beautiful. And so thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'd like to call, call a vote. All those in favor? All right, all in favor, so carried? I will move on to Planning Matters, 8.1, Draft Waste Water Treatment Capacity Allocation Policy. That the Committee of the Hall received for information, the draft wastewater treatment capacity allocation policy. And further, that the committee directs staff to bring the final draft wastewater treatment capacity allocation policy to the September 22nd regular meeting and draft the necessary bylaw for adoption of the policy. I have a mover and a secondary? Moved? Do we have a secondary? Second? All right, any questions or comments from the committee? Yep, does yours? Do you want to go first?
Awesome. Yeah, I noticed the tweaks on the updates, and overall, I didn't have a problem with the first draft either. Just a couple of things I wouldn't mind some clarification on. I know I had some, one discussion, we left North Side out of the, like, borders are, are not included in the, could is the North Side. Is there any value to put placing wording in that the North Side, there does not allow for any further allocations, any further allocations than the historical ones? They've already been granted because of a lack of structure, just to make it really clear. And the, a couple of it, the other thing was looking at clarification on the, it was a term, first come, first served for applications. However, we do have a grading system afterwards and how we, you know, decide which ones we'll go ahead with. So with the clarification, is that just first come, first served in terms of when we look at applicants? And have a certain number? Actually, I'll get you the paragraph so that we're looking at it properly here. It is in section. What's the part in that place? We said section 5. Ross, you're gentle. Show. Question.
Do you have a page number, Councilor?
So I'm looking at the actual section, timing of allocation.
Page two for allocation.
Yeah, and I had it, I had it in here, and I noted it down, and
It's, it's sectioned by timing and allocation?
Yes, and it's
Dates. Applications for allocation requests will be received in accordance with the schedule set out in Appendix A. Consideration of the applications will be on a first-come, first-served basis. Applications not considered will be brought forward for consideration in the following quarter.
Yeah, so that's, that's in the first, yes, in the first paragraph of section 5. And just to clarify, first come, first served, receiving applicants, but just because they receive first does not necessarily mean that we put our priority on them afterwards. It's just that we, that's how we look at the applications.
That's my understanding. That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so we look at the applications, okay?
Okay.
That's it for now. I'm sure I'll come with some more.
Okay. You have your second opportunity, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it for you, Chair, to Mr. Caldwell. I apologize if I missed it. There's a lengthy package that we were looking at here. Greenfield with services. I noticed that there was a lot of points initiated to different applications. However, I didn't see anything in here about greenfield with connections, and I find it irrelevant considering that all the subdivisions that we have within, including the infill lots, they're all services are at, at the door. So greenfield, greenfields are given a specific point basis upon the fact that they're empty lands, but greenfield with services at their doorstep. I didn't see any reference in there and how we would deal with that in a point system, given the fact that there's no investment from taxpayers because roads, water, sewer are right there, and all that additional infrastructure is paid for by the developer, so.
Okay, so you're working through the territory. So point A under, under six, competing application for allocation, application for allocation. The, the two points for no new off-site municipal infrastructure required. That would basically say if you have pipes at your door, you get two points.
Okay, so that would be in reference to greenfield because it's not specific.
Essentially, yes. If you have a situation where you're having to extend servicing, then there's an added requirement on the village in terms of the operation and maintenance of that system. So it's not as highly desirable as if you've been infill on existing services where you've already spent the money and already doing the operations on those, on those pipes.
Yeah, and that's the reason why I ask, because it says no new off-site municipal services. So that would also reference a single lot for a single house. So I was just, I was looking at something specific to greenfield, so. But if that captures it, then that would be, that would satisfy my concern.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Um, a question for Mr. Caldwell.
Okay, I believe Mr. Caldwell.
Oh, my apologies.
So that does capture the greenfield?
Yes, sorry, yes, it does.
So would we be able to include the word greenfield in that as well, just so it's, it's a little clearer? Infill lots and greenfield with services?
With services, fronting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, for interrupting, but I just wanted, wanted the answer. Thank you.
Good, Mayor.
So we've had this conversation of definitions regarding infill versus greenfield. So we've had this conversation of definitions regarding infill versus greenfield. And so I think it's important that we understand that there is a difference. Um, Mr. Caldwell described the pipes are in front of your door. The homeowner just needs to connect. And to me, that's infill. Um, and in the scoring, they get two points. Um, and then for. Empty lots that are adjacent to the infrastructure. Are, are they referred to as greenfield because they're going to have. An impact on the overall operations? Is that? I, I would appreciate having a very clear understanding of the differences between the two.
Uh, yes, so. The infill would be, you've got the pipes already there. I think the question, the confusion perhaps is the greenfield being you can put a more than one lot in there. So maybe we need to. Add a little bit more to definitions on that. But basically you would get two points if you're on services. You would get less than two points if you have services running in front of you.
So if there's, uh, an empty block of land. And, and there's a main across the road. And they want to put up multiple houses in this empty block of land. That is greenfield development.
It's a greenfield development, but it's essentially you don't have to extend pipes to service. So I think we need to go back. If you clarify the definition somewhat in terms of the greenfield versus the infill in terms of the definition.
But it's, so the, so the impact that happens in the scenario that I just described is bringing thirty new houses onto the system. Which is significantly different from putting one house in an infill lot that's tapping into. A level of service that already exists. And so I see a, a big difference in how you would evaluate a proposal that talks about infill versus a proposal that talks about greenfield development.
So essentially you're looking at adding another. Layer on the. Most on the site, if you put more density on the site, should account for more.
Should it account for more points, fewer points? I, I don't know, but I'd like to see it recognized in the, in the scoring system. Or do, do these rules only apply for larger subdivision developments?
It's somewhat captured the C intensification and infill. Demonstrates intensification, that or infill does not demonstrate intensification or infill. So if you put one lot, one. One house on a vacant lot, it would not really intensify. But if you had. An apartment building, then you are doing much more intensification.
Okay.
That's clear enough. Staff side, I don't.
Um. I think, I think probably the definitions to be looked at and ironed out a little bit. Might, might help just the conversation the past five minutes.
So in, I think this is kind of my final point, that if there's two proposals and. They're both larger subdivision style of things, the proposal that. Falls within the capacity that we can allocate. Should score higher than the proposal that we can't allocate for. So it's. Proposals that would require us to increase the size of the sewage treatment plant, for example. Would not score as high as a proposal. That would fit within our current capacity. Is that, is that a fair kind of evaluation?
If you have a phasing, if you, because essentially this is allocating capacity that you've identified to have. So if it pulls up and you don't have the capacity. Then it would be discussion with the applicant to determine, this is where we have for capacity available.
I think the mayor had one.
No, uh, I've already asked a question, so if the house or wants to go ahead.
Yeah, so my understanding, I re-listened to the, uh, meeting we had, uh, in July and I'm reading the definition, um, of greenfield development. I'm trying to bring up, uh. Schedule B on the zoning bylaw, I can't seem to find it on, under the bylaw. But, uh, greenfield would be places like Merrickville Grove, phases one and two, whereas where. Yeah, you've got mains over there, but you have to bring in more piping then to hook them up. It's not just a hookup into the main. You're building more infrastructure to add into it. It would be like Coller Hill. The proposal, um, we've seen where you have to bring in more piping, uh, more infrastructure to the main. That's my understanding. And the way it reads a, a develop, uh, a land previously undeveloped and requires the extension of new village services. Um, and those, those are the way I understand greenfield is that, and yes, in the allocate, we still have allocation capacity left. And by extending those services, um, say we have an allocation, we approve them. They still have to build the piping, but we still have allocation at the sewage treatment plant for those, uh. Well, they just have to build the infrastructure to the, to their homes. But it's, it's, yes, it's current allocations, we're dealing with what we have. And that's, that's it. And my understanding of greenfield development doesn't mean. Anything right above it means. The bigger parcels of land that don't have that infrastructure yet, uh, but, uh, have to be built into it. Yes, the developer will take on that cost. But then we take over the cost after and the maintenance once, um, the final. Uh, units are sold, once everything's done. That's how I understand greenfield development.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the second opportunity. Think a, a clarification on greenfield. Greenfield development is a development which has no supportive infrastructure, which. The infrastructure needs to be. Installed by the municipality. So the taxpayers are bringing. That infrastructure to that property so that the developer may develop it. Greenfield with services. Are greenfield. Subdivisions. That have water sewer, road infrastructure. At the doorstep, which means there's no investment from the municipality or the taxpayers. It is undertaken by the developer to develop that infrastructure within that subdivision proposal. Greenfield with services are highly sought after for municipalities. The simple reason is there's no investment for the taxpayer. It generates more usage on a waste treatment plant, which helps support the current users. It brings in more revenue dollars. Which helps support the municipality. Whether it's a single lot or a subdivision lot, greenfield with. Services at the door should be a priority. As well as a single lot with. Infrastructure, excuse me, infrastructure on the doorstep. So that's the difference between greenfield and greenfield with services. Greenfield. Lot is a lot where we would have to run. Ten kilometers, five kilometers, four kilometers of infrastructure. Coller Hill, uh, which the council referenced. Is a greenfield lot with services because the treatment plant's across the street. No investment required from the taxpayer. So that's the difference between a greenfield and a greenfield with services. I think that explanation. Is. My understanding of how you would look at the two types of greenfield.
Yeah, just so we're trying to avoid using the same term for two different ones because it is slightly confusing. We do have the definition, definition for infill, infill, which talks about vacant properties along service stretches. If we just add it to that. Maybe some additional wording to clarify that this is. Potential subdivision developments and any other developments that.
So if I may have a question, just since we're talking about the collar hill one, how would you define that one? Would you define that as an infiller or, or a, or a green site?
I'm not fully clear on exactly where that sits in relation to all the piping system. I think that might be partially up the hill. If it's partially up the hill, I don't think, I don't think the pipes are up there.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Now I'm confused because JP two G presented a, a fourteen unit proposal. That Coller Hill property to cancel, I guess about. A year ago.
Yeah.
So, and, uh, we deferred that, uh, moving forward, so. At the time, it was identified as greenfield with services at the doorstep. It's right literally across the street from the, from the plant, just.
I apologize, I just saw that in the back of my head exactly where that product stands, to be honest.
It's just that it, it was before the council and it's on a deferral.
So if it has.
At the moment. So that's, there are services there.
All right, so yeah, so going for, I think, well, Mr. Caldwell and, and, uh, I'm from the work manager. I think if you guys clarified those, uh, those definitions, I think it'd be really helpful. So we're all on the same page of what the actual terminology you're talking about. Is there any other question to follow?
Um, since it's come up in our discussions. I, and not this moment, but we have. Um. An extension to Merrick Grove, or sorry, McLean's Landing. And a request for development on Coller Hill. Um. I would, I would like that to be used as an example of how this policy could apply. In discussions with these two situations. I think that might be helpful to. Better understand the application of the policy.
So any other comments or questions? From minute? No, I think there is one.
Not sure to status of the caller, that proposal, whether it's still on the. In the queue or not, but, uh. We can check and see. And if it is, we can compare the two. That's what you're looking for, a comparison.
Um, in the deferral, there's a note that says deferred due to lack of allocation, lack of capacity.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we look at is we can't grant capacity that we don't have.
Yeah.
So this is. This helps us grant what little capacity that we do have. Through merit system.
Yeah.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I may add a little bit of clarification, the deferral was, uh, because of the contour of the property. There was, uh, there was concerns about how the runoff was. There was a neighbor that had. Brought that to our attention and, uh, we were looking for further, uh. Conversation through our, our planner and with the developer to how that would be, uh, mitigated.
Yeah.
So I believe, uh, there was, there's always been a capacity conversation with any, uh, any, uh, subject that we, uh, have before us, whether it's a single lot or a subdivision. But the main concern, uh, recognition to my knowledge is that it was because of the contour of the property and how that, how that would be developed.
And may I make a request then that we ask, uh, the clerk to review the notes and the reasons for deferral? Because my recollection is very different.
Perhaps it might suit Mr. Chair if the clerk could send that back to council at some point, and so we would have that in advance.
Yeah, I think this should be payable.
Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other further questions or comments? Yes, yes, for you.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not to pick on, on this, but when we're referring to no investment by the village is required for. These developments, these partial developments. There, there is a development. We have to get pipes to the front of the houses, then the houses get hooked on. We're in charge of those pipes afterwards that get hooked to the houses. It's, uh, it does require an investment from the village afterwards. Once, once, once it's been built, we take it over. Uh, the, like, when you go on, I'm like, you don't just have a lead into the main, you have pipe work going, uh, on. Onto, uh, onto those properties. There's no infrastructure in the greenfield until it's built. So that's, I'm just saying there is a cost to, to the village as well.
Mr. Chair.
It's not just hooked up straight up to the pipe. If you're building several units, a hundred, two hundred meters off. You're not, uh, uh, and, and hooking up several of them, you are adding pipe work.
Well, refer that to Mr. Caldwell. That's correct, but essentially that service connection. You're, you're gaining tax because from that service connection that you weren't getting before.
But, but the, so for call, for, for, um, Merrickville, Merrick's landing, there's extension of work. We will, we, as the village will be in charge of some of it and then, and whatever, uh, we will maintain that afterwards.
Uh, in terms of extending services, of doing the actual work of extending those services?
Like within those, there was nothing in that, nothing in those.
That's all, that's all the developer.
Yeah, that's all the developer, but then once that's done, everything's bought. What does, what reverses to the village?
The infrastructure within the right.
Yeah.
But we don't pay, we don't pay for any of those.
No, no, I know we don't pay for any of the installation. What I'm saying though, to say it's, there's no cost to the village. There is a cost afterwards for maintenance. We will take over maintenance and that's. So, so it's misleading to say it's, it's just for free. We do take over maintenance. And that's, I think, that's some of the consideration that was considered in this, um, criteria is that whether we take over maintenance or not. There, whether there's additional, you had referred to it right at the beginning, if there's anything additional maintenance that we have to do.
Yes, essentially the main lines are your main.
Yeah.
The main lines reflect the biggest cost for your ongoing maintenance operation if. If there's an issue with the service connection, it's typically going to be. A long time down the road or it's going to be an issue on the private side of that.
Yeah, and that's fine. This clarification, because like I said, I think the policy, I, overall policies. It provides a lot of clarification and transparency for the general public as well.
Mr. Chair. Right, uh, not, not to continue to go down this road, but. The developer is responsible for all that infrastructure. And when it's turned over to the municipality, yes, it becomes our responsibility. But we have to keep in mind that. Those infrastructures are for water and sewer are anywhere from seventy to a hundred years. And the roads are anywhere from twenty five to thirty years. And the amount of taxes that you would. Uh, draw into the community and the amount of extra support to the ratepayers. Far outweighs. The infrastructure, uh, concerns down the road. We can go into a whole kinds of conversations here, but I mean, that would be at a point where council would say, we brought in the new subdivision. We need to put X amount of dollars away every year to support this rehabilitation or rebuild, you know, twenty five, thirty, fifty years down the road. I mean, this is a. Completely irrelevant to the. To this conversation, so we're, we're. I think we're gone off track and like to bring it back in.
Yeah, I think we probably spent enough time on this, so there's nothing further new or pressing. I think I'll call a vote.
So what are we voting exactly?
Uh, we are voting to accept it and, uh. And for the committee direct staff to bring the final draft of wastewater treatment capacity allocation policy to the September twenty second regular meeting. And a draft of the necessary bylaw for adoption of the policy. Have a mover?
We move.
Already know, yeah. All right, all in favor? All right, carried. Uh, staff reports, um, nine point one, Public Works, nine point one point one. Rural Roads scored that the committee of the whole accept this report for information and as the committee. Direct staff to bring this final scoring to the September twenty second regular council meeting for approval. And further that upon receiving and reviewing information from the geotechnical investigation staff. Are to proceed with the developing appropriate tenders for the first blank number of roads, the scoring matrix. Uh, can I have a mover and a seconder?
Move second.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Marlon, you have it first?
Um, I wanted to ask about Ull Road and the timing of the collection of, um. The, uh, the traffic, if it's representative of the entire year and representative of. Where exactly that happened? Because I know there's. I've been told there's a lot of traffic from hydro vehicles on, I think, the south. Or the north, I can even call it northern. So did it include though that back and forth, uh, hydro vehicles and is, is the same level of traffic seen at the other end?
Um, so the, the information we have. That that traffic was taken the fall of twenty twenty three. The location, I don't know the top of my head, something I'll have to look into. And granted, I think I sent this out to council, so, so that revised sheet that just had the AD, ADT. Like there's an estimated column and then what was actually taken from the fall of twenty twenty three. But granted, that's just from a seven to eight day period. So ideally it'd be a week every season to get a better representation. So it's just wanted to make that clear. It was noted at council, but for the public as well, that. That, that traffic counts was just a one week period in twenty twenty three.
Could I ask that be updated before we make a decision on that particular stretch of road? Since it is a few kilometers long and would be inexpensive.
So just for Ull or traffic counts for.
Uh, Ull I think is the main concern that I had. But I also wanted to ask about Putnam Road and what exactly would be, if we gave the go ahead for that, what, what would the work look like? But I also wanted to ask about Putnam Road and what exactly would be, if we gave the go ahead for that, what, what would the work look like? Because it is not a through road. It's used by local traffic only as far as I know and. And it already has a hard surface, so. Why is it in the list?
That was, um, we, that was part of the, the original. Um, how many motions? It was in one of the, one of the motions where Armstrong and Putnam were to be included because they're already hardtop services. That was the direction I took from councils. Or understood to be from council.
Mr. Chair, if I may add some context, I think it came to. Uh, council, um, at the beginning of our term, uh, through staff because the. Uh, road was prematurely breaking down. That was one of the main driving points. The service itself, uh, hadn't been, uh, living up to its expected life. And that it was prematurely breaking up. That was, uh, my understanding of the reason, one of the driving reasons why it was, uh. Discussed, uh, at council.
So the original, thank you for that. The original list of roads as well, that that included Armstrong, Putnam, and I wanted. I believe there was another one that was already hard surface, but so that's the reason why that was included to be addressed for replacement.
Yeah, I'll verify that too. I remember that conversation and it was up for suggesting to get re, uh. Well, another layer put on and we decided that at the time, we wanted to know what was underneath the road before we went ahead with it.
That's, Mr. Chair, that's correct, because, uh, it was a conversation that we had that we put that work off because of how the road itself was developed. Uh, there, there was a sense that it wasn't, uh, engineered the way it should have been engineered. And that was contributing to the premature, uh, breakup of the road surface. And that was to be investigated to see if that was the actual fact of why the road was prematurely wearing. But we've never received a report or an update on that, so. And we're going back a couple of years, I believe, Mr. Chair, if I'm correct. So, uh, that was, uh, that was the main concern, uh, with Putnam Road. It's because of how it was engineered and putting, uh, uh, a new surface on a compromised base, uh. Would not be good investment for taxpayers' money and that's the reason why we, we put it.
Okay. So I wasn't aware of that, a couple of years ago, but, but Putnam was included in the geotechnical. So there won't be information coming.
So that's, I think that, that will help satisfy some of the concerns.
Yeah, to illustrate or demonstrate what the, what the road base is or how it was constructed to better, better determine what the surface should be. Whether one or two lifts or asphalt, but that information will be coming back to council.
Yes, and, uh, if, uh. If the manager of operation wants to have a conversation offline, I can add more to it. We don't need to have that conversation in open forum.
Okay, that's good, thanks. Hey, Murray, further want to add a question or a comment? Deputy Mayor?
Well, thank you. Um, the recommendation that concludes, uh, with the statement staff to proceed with developing. Appropriate tenders for the first blank number of roads in the scoring matrix. Um. Personally, I think we need more information to, to pick a number. Um, like to be picked, if we just arbitrarily say, let's fix the, the first ten. Or the first two, we'd have to know, I would have to know more before I could pick a number. And I wonder if staff could provide some guidance. Um, in selecting the first roads to work on, maybe based on the score. So anything above. Two hundred, for example, should be looked at first and as next year. Or maybe the number's a hundred and ninety-five, but something that will help us. Pick the right number of roads to work on rather than, my favorite number's seven. I'm being facetious, my apologies. Um, and I'd like to, to have that motion, uh, reflect that kind of intent.
So if I may, can I just throw some information up there? So in the third page of this, my report, so what the. Have a kind of color coded here. So the, the first nine roads are recommended for reconstruction and hard surface discussions. And the reason being, so in all honesty, I'll go through them. Landenod makes good sense. Corktown Pioneer Bolton makes good sense. Putnam and Armstrong make good sense. Possibly Curford, just for that first section. Um, and the reason being is that. A lot of these roads or some of them, there's been discussions in the past, I believe with council, right, including the twenty twenty-five capital budget projects. As well as seeing how they, how they performed in the spring. With the traffic, you know, with all the criteria that was outlined in the scoring matrix. Um. So, so I guess you could say any roads that scored higher than. A hundred and sixty points would be great contenders for council's discussion to move forward with hard surface. The, the goal with this as well is to start putting the, the tenders together. And that's not committing that a project will happen, but it's to start the tender process. Cause that was included in the motion as well, is to start this process in the fall of twenty twenty-five, just to start securing contracts, so. So the, the goal or the, I guess the ask from staff is to get the direction so we could start moving ahead with these contracts or with the tenders. Just to bring the information back to council. So that's kind of, that's the goal to get the, what roads. Um, am I to focus on putting tenders together on?
If, if I, just a quick follow up, when, when you receive a tender, how long is it good for? How long is it remains valid?
Um, it all depends on the wording of the tender. So what we would do is to put it together for, if it's a three-year, um, project, I believe is the wording in, in the, the motion. Which is, it's good. And then chances are contractors will bid on all those roads over the three-year periods. And there'll be probably a CPI increase, which, that still makes good sense. Like we won't know what the cost is going to be from, you know, the, the projects that we're going next year will be locked in and then whatever the cost is plus CPI. And the tragedy, you know, kind of contested that right, that CPI ranges, but at least we have an idea, like within a range. And then once that time comes, then, I mean, it's, it just, it, it makes sense. Here was the, here was the price at that time and then the CPI increased annually.
Okay.
Yeah, just a reminder, I did second the motion, so.
Okay, I think, I thought you spoke.
I just added some context, Ireland's, uh, question, if I may. And I was just going to say, uh, uh, to alleviate some of the concern with the deputy mayor is that. It's identified, there's nine roads that are identified, that thirty-six, uh, kilometer, thirty-six point six nine kilometers. Uh, we've done a lot of work to get ourselves, uh, to this point, uh, which the public manage, uh, works manager just brought up. I think the driving factor here is that we're looking at, uh, possibly looking at a ten million dollar loan to fix these roads that have been. Uh, neglected for the last twenty-eight years. I think that would be the, that would be the determining number. Once we get the quotes in and what the actual cost is for the roads and we can make a decision. To add or subtract at that point in time. We don't need to pump the brakes here. What we need to do is. Get actual numbers so that we can make a qualified decision. So if it comes back and we can only do three reasonably, that's what we do. If it comes back and we can do nine plus a couple of others. I think that would determine how we move forward in satisfying this, because all the roads. In the rural area as well as roads in the village. Uh, need substantive work and when you've had five percent of your rural roads in good condition and the rest are for, uh, fair to poor. It's, it's something that we need to move on. We don't need to collect any more data. We've been collecting data for years, so. I think the numbers are there for us to, to make a decision. We just need to know what the actual cost is. And then we can, uh, we can qualify or disqualify as we move forward. Thank you.
Uh, council rules next, or did you want to follow up on yours?
I, I would like to respond to the mayor's comment. I am in no way attempting to pump the brakes. I asked for rationale for filling in a number. And now that we have had a conversation with the manager of public works, it's clear to me that the number is nine. So if the motion that comes before us at our regular meeting reads. Um, proceed with developing appropriate tenders for the first nine roads of the scoring matrix. Simple.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, after reading through all this, I'm like. Um, and the issue with the road don't just go back twenty-eight years, they go back decades, even pre-amalgamation, it's how they're originally built. And then there's, and then seeing like within the village, there's a. Well, it's here, so. What we've, we haven't had a lot of public input on how many taxpayers are willing to pay. Or what a taxpayer is willing to tolerate in terms of tax rates as well. And, and are we actually, I know it says hard surface, are we committed to hard surface versus making sure we're building up these roads? They could be hard surfaces eventually. But what it is, is that it's the conditions of the roads themselves as gravel roads, um, and that's, it's, it's the ride on them. And I know we've, like I said, we've had some feedback on, on land and not when the conditions of the gravel road was improved. There were, that, that, some of the complaints dropped. I mean, there's going to be people who want paved roads no matter what. But are we committing ourselves to paved roads as well? The other, um. Yeah, the, the other thing is, uh, like, what are we doing in terms of, instead of, uh, you know, like starting bringing these roads up to standards? And instead, maybe we do it when grants become available. And I think we were, we got the year two thousand and six, I think we received that email. I believe there was a series of grants available and that's why some of these. Roads that are hard surface are now hard surface, but we can, like, we have to look through some of the history. Uh, because we're talking about millions of dollars and, and yes, I realize, um, loan to money is a pot of money, but it has to be paid back. We're committed paying back a certain amount, then are we handcuffing ourselves in paying attention to other things? So we have to put some thought into, into that. Um, the other thing is, I know some of the matrix, uh, matrices, they discuss giving points for the amount of tax dollars we get per road. And I'm not sure that's normally how it's done, but what it also does is puts values on those who pay more taxes versus less. And there are several factors, so many factors that, uh, determine how many, how much tax a person pays. Somebody who has a two million dollar house is going to pay a lot more tax than somebody has a four hundred thousand dollar house, but those are two households. They don't deserve, deserve different levels of service. The other thing is, if we're going to concentrate on hard surfaces, are we neglecting some more of those gravel roads further? The other thing, and, and with the matrix, I noticed that there was a couple of them. Um, yeah, Yule Road, I wasn't quite sure why, it was quite small, but the other ones. Uh, I mentioned Corktown Road that you recommended actually being divided into two. Because the, as one of the sheets, uh, because the condition of the road up to Boyd's Landing is different than the condition afterwards. And if that is to be the case, should that not then be reevaluated and the matrices, uh, then provided for each half? Uh, which would also change, uh, ones for, uh, like for that particular road. Um, the other one, I, I, I'll, if I put in an opinion, uh, like Pioneer Roadland and not make some sense in the sense that they connect to Bolton. And then also connect into, onto six, onto fifteen, so that provides sort of a byway as well. Uh, for, uh, hard times for people to drive, uh, as well, so that would make some sense. But like I said, my, my. Conditions, not, not bringing the conditions up of the road and having a roadmap to do that, is that. Does it have to be hard surface right now? Because that does up and buy several million dollars. And, and yes, and I do support what staff has suggested, at least the survey, getting public feedback on the willingness to, uh. Borrow money, the willingness, uh, on how high we're willing, uh, their taxes to go for hard surfacing a road. Uh, when we can bring out a, a gravel road up to a good condition, um. And then maintain it until more funds become available or we, we have opportunities to hard surface. Those are mine.
Do you want any feedback from?
No, that, that's just my, uh, I don't think there's any feedback required for that, that should be thrown in. Few.
If, if I can, so, so yes, in the report, there is consideration there to, for council. To consider, at least talk about, right, for a public consultation, because I think that's a good point you brought up, councillor. Um. You know, do people want it? Could it be split fifty fifty? I don't know, right? It's just, maybe that's something that would be worthwhile for a conversation for council. To consider getting public consultation or public input on that. The Corktown one. Um. When I hit send, send on that last thing that just had all the information, the raw data. Um, that was a consideration at the beginning to break that up and then. I guess. The, the, the purpose of that spreadsheet was to look at the scoring, right? Uh, yes, the raw data is in there. I, I can't take it back, but that was a consideration, but it wasn't included or wasn't part of the, the final scoring. It wasn't divided, Corktown Road. Just wanted to make that clear.
What follow up? Mr. Chair, if I may, there's a lot of, uh, conversation happening at the table, but I mean, when you look at the, uh. At a municipality, any municipality, core infrastructure is a, a focus and a driving mechanism for a municipality to move itself forward financially. And when you have a, uh, infrastructure that is identified as compromised, especially, uh, in a transportation, uh. Aspect, I mean, uh, we've got a hundred and ten kilometers of roads. And, uh, we have, uh, the vast majority of those roads in a situation where they are fair to poor. Uh, as that infrastructure continues to break, the cost only goes up. Uh, I think with the history of people complaining about the conditions of roads. For the eighteen years that I've been in this municipality, I think the consensus is that. Uh, the, uh, the people want their infrastructure, uh, renewed. I know myself as a taxpayer. I understand that there's, uh, uh, there are certain situations where it unable to, uh. To accelerate those interests, but over a course of time. You need to expect to see some sort of investment within your neighborhood. So whether that's, uh, roads resurfacing or sidewalks or parks or what have you. Uh, tax dollars are, are to utilize, are to be utilized for the benefit of the municipality. So the point with borrowing the money, uh, for the municipality, that's the only way that we can move forward. And there are multiple opportunities. The province just, uh, announced a four billion dollar initiative for rural. Uh, uh, rural roads, uh, so there are numerous amounts of grants that are available. It's whether or not we're taking the advantage of offsetting that borrowing cost by satisfying, uh, it with a grant. So as we moved forward, we did exactly the same thing with the waste treatment plant. Waste treatment plant moved forward and then they sought grants to help offset those costs. Those, this is what we need to do as. The governing body within the municipalities to ensure that we're delivering a safe transportation avenue. And we're, uh, securing our wastewater and our water. And if we put it off and wait for a specific grant. Uh, we could be waiting a long time. We've already been waiting for twenty-eight years for this since amalgamation. That was the twenty-eighth year reference that I was making since amalgamation, twenty-eight years. The roads in Wolford were brought up to standards before amalgamation. Uh, Wolford had redone a lot of its roads to gravel road to a gravel road, mind you. But that was done prior to, uh, amalgamation, so there has been investment. In the rural area, there just hasn't been a specific focus, so I think moving forward, we've been collecting data for. I've been doing this for seven years. Eight, almost eight years now, or seven years, uh. This council has moved forward. Significantly in collecting data over the last two and a half years. The data is all supported by qualified engineers. All we need to do is, uh, move it forward, so. Hard surface roads on, in the rural area create an opportunity and a focus, and that's all we can do as a municipality. Is create that opportunity. We can't force anybody to do anything. But what we can do is create a direction and create an opportunity. And when you enhance and support your core infrastructure, that's exactly what you're doing. And you're putting in measures that will help hopefully put you in a better financial position in the future, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Saying that we shouldn't rush forward with paving necessarily does not, is not saying the same as not wanting to improve the core infrastructure. Uh, bringing gravel, the problem is several of these gravel roads, as the gravel roads needs study has stated. Need, uh, need, need to be built. They have need better bases, they need widening, they need better ditching. And that's, uh, that's why I say that, uh, that, that's, that does not necessarily involve paving, but that's still an improvement of the roads. So, uh, and eighteen years is not very long, uh, in terms of major intersection, uh, major infrastructure investment. Um, there are, uh, and, and like I said, nothing I said counters wanting to invest in, uh, in, in, uh, the roads. Nothing I say, uh, suggests not wanting to improve them. It's, uh, does it need to all be hard surface? Or do we need to, we can put off hard surface for a while and start bringing these roads up to, up to standards, like H F McLean was for about five years. And then it, and then it was paved and like, something like that, bringing more roads up to standard, more gravel roads up to standards. And then prioritizing uh versus prioritizing costs to a certain subset and then uh leaving other ones. For a little bit longer. And that's all I'm saying. So. I can't articulate it better than that, but.
Mr. Chair, just in addition to H F McLean, it hasn't been five years. It was uh. Over twenty years, uh, H F McLean was there. So um, and it was the the developer. For the subdivision that put the H F McLean in. He supported uh that infrastructure. Uh, so it's been, it was over twenty years.
Mr. Mayor.
If sorry for interrupting.
So. If we could just bring our focus back to the motion rather than. Um, the those kinds of conversations, my understanding is that. This motion is intended to allow staff to move forward to start collecting dollar data. Which is a crucial step. We all recognize that in moving this forward. I take some comfort in the recommendations in the matrix that says. These nine roads are recommended for reconstruction and hard surface discussions. So staff are going to continue to provide us with information so that we can make decisions. But we really need to get this motion. Out and so that tenders can be collected and we can actually start doing the data. So could we please take a vote on the motion in front of us?
Okay. Just before that, I just wanted to have my little input on it. Um, living on route all my life, um, and a lot of these roads in my area are on this list. Um, I've reached out to Mr. Keen before, and I really value the the effort and the and the work that him and his supporting staff have done to get us this far so far. But I had questions and concerns with the way that the matrix came or how how the results came out after. We saw the results, how the rules lined up, and then seeing the variance. One of mine was uh. Uh, traffic counts. That um mid range for the traffic count from the matrix was from fifty to uh one ninety nine counts per day on on the average. And my concern is with that is as a road like Yule Road that doesn't really see that much. Through traffic end to end, it only actually has fifty seven vehicles per day on average, which is at the very low end. And be, my concern is that that would take up a big investment when we could be. There could be a road scoring lower, maybe a hundred and a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty, actually sees a lot, maybe a hundred and eighty cars per day. And my concern with that is in April, when you have three or four weeks without the grader going out because frost is coming out and staff can only do what they can do. But when you have a hundred and eighty cars going over a road per day, rather compared to fifty, that road deteriorates a lot quicker. So. I think it's important that we have accurate traffic counts on, say, the top twenty roads. Or within the last three years before we make decisions on these. Because we need to have that accurate accurate data, because when it comes down to picking one road over another road, I want to make sure I have. Up to date data on how many vehicles are actually going to be using that road on that second, third week of April, when that road is really starting to fall apart.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's something that I would support as well, because this was only done over uh a few days. Um, obviously, the numbers are high. But I mean, that data is important as we move forward, but I, to Deputy Mayor's. Point is that we need to determine a number. And I think the nine roads that are identified to let the uh in pink here. The thirty six point six eight kilometers, let staff go out and get uh requests for quotes and see how that number comes in. And. I would also suggest that uh perhaps Public Works reaches out to the county to get the uh data. Uh, counting uh. Machine. Because they had lent it to us for free and it costs us nothing. Uh, in order for us to collect that information. So the county is always willing to assist. So I think uh. If the public works manager reached out to the county, perhaps it would be. Uh, we'd be able to collect that data at no uh cost to that extent.
And now I I just want to test the water, too, is if we go ahead with the nine roads, just for tender sake. Are we able to swap them out as we gather more information?
Yeah, yeah. So we can't really make a determination until we get the actual numbers. And then. We can start to uh dissect as needed and to councillor uh Girl's point. Maybe we can afford to put a hard surface on any of the roads. And we just rehabilitate them to a good gravel road. If that's what we can afford, that's what we do. But if we can afford. To create an opportunity and of enhancement, and Yule Road is a prime example. Uh, of growth potential, because there's no farmlands out there and connecting to. Uh, the back part of Rockville and growth into Elizabeth Town, Kitlee, and the business parks and job opportunities and so on and so forth. Is something that we need to look at. It may not have a lot of traffic, but it may have a lot of potential for growth. Which would support us in the future financially. So I mean, those are things that need to be determined as well. So it's not just specifically. To vehicles for myself, it's. Investing in that road like. Years ago, Putnam Road was hard surfaced and so was the road as a bridge. You know, great for the people that live on that road, but a lot of that land's farmland and farmed. And we don't develop farmland. But yet we put millions of dollars into hard surfacing a road with low housing and no potential for growth. So when we're making these decisions, growth potential. Is something that should be important part of the conversation, because what we want to do is recoup the cost of that road as quickly as we possibly can.
And now if I may bring up a point too, that Mr. Keen, two months, I think it's about two months ago, brought forward a pilot project that we're trying with the reused. Um, asphalt. There's roads on here that I think that would actually be a lot suited for something like that, some of these dead end roads and and lower use roads. So I just didn't want to commit ourselves to 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 hard surfacing a road when maybe we should develop it. But we should maybe look looking at instead of hard servicing, something like that uh repurposed asphalt.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, just the motion is just to get.
Yes.
The cost. We're not making any kind of a commitment here. It's just let bring back the cost. They wanted to know how many roads we wanted to include in that. First initial uh onset of the uh of this proposal. And I think there's nine roads identified. Uh, one through nine that have all the potential. And we're supportive of other data. Let's just find out what that cost, the actual cost is, and we can dive a lot deeper into the conversation as we move forward.
So can we give clear direction to our C A O and Mr. Keen?
I would recommend that we do the first nine and uh see how that fares out. If that's uh my colleagues support that.
I would hope too that we can get accurate uh traffic count on the top twenty, that anything that hasn't had. Traffic counts in the last three years, if we, or in the last three years, if we get up to date counts, just so we know that we're way in these roads, right?
I think the the value of having that traffic count is is good. And I think regigging that once we get that, it shouldn't stop us from proceeding with seeking tenders because. The information is the information. It's how we score them once we get them. That's the important part.
So sort of the way the way that my brain is working around this is. We're basically using those top nine for the thirty five kilometers more than.
Yep.
The sea birds for that cost us.
Yeah, these are just a sort of.
It's a per kilometer cost.
Per kilometer cost. And how we choose to dole that out once we get the information, that's council decision. But we have to proceed. Uh, we had the asset management and the financial strategy provided to us by Watson and Associates. This was all factored in to that plan. Uh, and incorporated into that data, and I think it's achievable. But we have to start, and I think the best way to start is through getting the tender documents out and get some real numbers. And using the, getting the most value we can from the dollars that we have. This is the first one. This is like the fourteen step, but it's the most important step right now. Okay?
If I could add to this, so the tenders. That's anticipated to go away are going to be whatever roads if we'd go the top nine.
Yeah.
But it's to do the brushing, the ditching, the drainage, culvert replacement. Uh, reconstruction of the road, depending on what the data comes back or even test pits, whatever. It'd be provisional items, but it's it's basically rebuilding that road. Let's compare it just for argument's sake to land a nod or. Bolton Pioneer, but land a nod that's already done. With the intent of hard surface, or that's that's what I was going to put in these tenders. That could be provisional. Right? So the hard surface can be taken out, but but I just want to make it. I want to make sure council's understanding what these tenders are going to look like. It's the the drain is a ditching, culvert replacement. The the base with the idea of a hard surface with two lifts of hard surface, surface treatment.
Good, yeah, Mr. Chair, it's mayor. So do I, if I may, Mr. Chair. So. Complete reconstruction of the road to receive a hard surface is the only way to go. We don't want to put a hard surface on a compromised base road because it's just.
Nobody's suggesting.
No, it's not. I know, I know. So to your point, yes. We need the tenders to have all that information in it, but we also need to know. What the cost of the hard surface is, tarantip. And paving. So we need to know. What the actual cost is. We don't need to know what the cost to rebuild the road is and then. Identify a couple of roads we want a hard surface and go back out and 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 search out for that uh that cost. If we can wrap it all into a package. Where. Complete reconstruction with all what you had mentioned. And additionally, the cost for tarantip. And pavement. For the road so that we know when we're having that discussion, this is what it's going to cost to rebuild the road. This is what it's going to cost to put tarantip on that rebuilt road, or this is what it's going to cost to put pavement on that rebuilt road. I think that information. Is relevant to us to have this conversation at the table. As the CEO had mentioned, this is step fourteen. We've gathered a lot of information. Let's bring the full package to the table. So that we understand. And if we're looking at how we're going to proceed and we're looking for public input and all that stuff. Everybody has the exact numbers of what. We are proposing and what the actual investment is. In the roads. I think that's the way to go. It costs us nothing to add that to the to the request for the quote. Rebuilt. Rebuilt with tarantip, rebuilt with pavement.
So if I made, yes, that's that was. Bang on the whole intent.
Just want to make sure it's clear.
One tenner together. Now I understand to put a comparison, what it would cost to do asphalt as well.
I think that the difference is. Once you get the road up to standard for an asphalt, asphalt's asphalt, it's so much per. Per whatever, but it's building it up to be accepting the asphalt. That's the big factor here. Once we get all that data. Okay, we're going to asphalt these roads. It's going to be X amount of dollars per however they judge it. But it's just, it's bringing them up the standard is the key. And then once we bring them up to standard, then we get the data on how much it's going to cost to. Put asphalt or or tarantip or whatever for the next step after that. But. Getting the groundwork done and getting the base surface and ditching and all that stuff. Is what takes the time asphalt. They can do that in half phase. It's the other stuff that takes the time and the. And it's a consistent amount, like. Once you get it brought up to standard, it's it's the asphalt cost what it costs. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, that's where I get confused now. So the CEO, with the way I'm understanding is that. She's looking at just getting the cost to rebuild the road, and we can do the hard surfaces at another time.
No, 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 that's not what that is not what I was suggesting.
Well, just, that's just the way that you phrased it. So that was my concern. And that's why I keep. Jumping into the conversation. Let's get the full package cost.
Yeah.
And we can dissect it however we wish to. At a future point, once council decides this is what the costs are, this is. Unachievable. We need to refocus and do this. And the purpose and intent. Is when we look and we have conversations with our constituents. The only reason why we didn't solid surface your road is because of the cost. Here's the cost. And these are other roads that we need to focus on to rebuild the gravel portion. So we've decided to make. A invested. Moving forward in rebuilding these gravel roads and hard surface will come down the road. But we need to have the numbers to understand.
Happen outside, I heard.
You need to, when you're talking with the public, we need to have. Reason why we made a decision and, you know.
Yeah.
When when we're looking at tens of millions of dollars, there's a good reason. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
And so. So you need to be clarified, you know, just to add another.
Yep.
Um. Another item, the traffic counts. So we do have devices now that can that take. Counts. So we'll set these up where we can. Is it going to hit all the roads? Basically, what I'm trying to do is get a fall count for at least the top nine roads or. Yule for sure, right? To get those, that data. Um. Granted, it's going to be like a a fall term. So I think what I'm going to do in the interim. Um, and I'm not really looking for a direction unless unless everybody says whoa, whoa. Is to get cost or what it would take to do to get a consultant to do traffic counts on all twenty roads or whatever roads. Um, throughout the year. So it's a it's a true average annual daily traffic. And I'll present that to council hopefully next. Committee of all.
The quotation part.
The quotation, yeah.
Yeah, and then also like, whatever, Mr. Chair, if I may, is, you know, the county does o- offer that uh those counting devices for us, and these counts are. What we have presently on this report are uh mid to late October of last year. So we do have a fall count already. That's representative in the report we already have. My concern was about hiring a consultant to do all the roads. It'd be significantly more cost to the taxpayer rather than. Us borrowing the equipment from the county. Should they not be using it? Uh. At no cost, because that's what they did for us last year, and we did multiple roads at a time at no cost. And we collected that data. So that that my my concern is what the cost would be, but I mean, I mean, we'll entertain the cost if uh you wish to bring it to the table.
But just to clarify, so. So the the traffic counts we have though for the fall. I've. Am I still going out and getting updated counts? You said that is is our council's looking for.
Because I don't believe you have updated counts on all the roads.
No, the last, the last value that that I've seen now. Um, maybe there's more up to date ones, but the ones that are used in that in the the road need study was from the fall of twenty twenty three.
Yeah, that was out on all roads?
No, just the, just whatever.
So my concern is the roads that haven't had counts done on them in years.
Right.
Need to have, we need to have that accurate data, because we could be using data that's fairly old.
Mr. Chair, I stand corrected. Uh, public manager is right. I've. Completely glazed over twenty twenty four. So you're correct. It was twenty twenty three when the data was collected, not twenty, not last year.
Okay.
I uh, forgot all about twenty twenty four. It went by so fast.
But but my my point is it's only partial data, not all the roads were collected then.
No.
And we need to know those numbers, the roads that aren't in that in that in that top twenty, just looking at the list. I've seen how sort of busy the roads are just from from living here. I think that's top twenty. We need to have accurate numbers within the last three years. So anything that hasn't been kept counted in the last three years, I think we need to get counts on it.
I agree. And just Corktown as an example, in October. Uh. In October, it was uh. We missed all the summer traffic on Corktown Road. So I agree. Thank you.
Good, Deputy Mayor.
Um, I I support the idea of having a consultant to at least finding out the cost. There's there's a lot more to it than just putting out counters and. Going remembering to move them at certain times. So I think it would be useful to at least find out how much. A consultant would charge to do that kind of work.
There's no other further questions or comments? We can call a vote. All those in favor? All right.
And sorry, that was, the blank is nine?
Yeah.
Yeah. So let's carry. Uh, right, so nine, one, one, point two, signal lights at the three crosswalks. The committee of the whole received this report for information and staff given direction. To proceed with the purchase and installation of signal lights at the crosswalks identified in the report. And that the funds for the signal lights be drawn from the working reserve. And further that the committee direct staff to bring this request to the September twenty second regular council meeting for final approval. Do I have a number and a secondary? Move against the grill, taken by the mayor. Uh, any questions or comments from the committee?
Yeah, I think it's uh just having the, we do need the sing signal lights, uh, as you say, already see at uh. Up on Saint Lawrence by a. By a drum. And it. It is confusing for pedestrians to see a crosswalk, but no signal. So I I do think we need to have the signal lights for for safety and. But uh, that makes a big difference.
Oh. You have any comments to?
Uh, just a comment. I think it's been a long time coming, and I thank staff uh for the work that they've done uh. Uh, at our level and also uh working with the county. The are county roads, so the county is uh. Is insisting on uh having them consistent throughout the United Counties and uh lights. Are going to become the standard approach to crosswalks within the United Counties. So I appreciate. All the effort that staff has put into it and to bring it to this point. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Just a a question uh about why the crosswalks at Main and Saint Lawrence. Don't fall under the same requirements of lights. That, I mean, it is our most dangerous intersection. Um, that's. And they. The intersection involves county roads, so. do we know why they're not required?
I don't have an answer for that. I updated council. I just this week actually just made aware that that the two, so there's two crosswalks, Main East and Mill Street, they do require it, the the reasoning reasoning or logistics. I'm not going to speak for the county. I can I can ask the question and and pass that on to to counsel.
I'm I'm pleased that we're deciding to include Saint Lawrence and Drummond, even though it's not required there because that's a that's a key interest, a key crosswalk for kids.
I guess if I can add to that, the the reasoning why those two require it, that's that's set aside, but because there's three new crosswalks going in, then to be consistent, then it's to have the signal lights. So the logistics behind it, again, I'm not going to answer for council or for county. But because because we're putting three in, that is to be consistent and to have lights on the the third. So the county has offered to put lights without intersection.
Leave against the girl.
Go ahead. Yeah, I I believe it's because there are the stop sets that are considered traffic controls. And these are, these are traffic controls for as under the, and I have to double check the higher traffic. That's how it used to be. But the the stop signs count as traffic controls. Cars have to stop. So that's why. That makes sense.
Yeah. So and just to add some context of the conversation, the deputy mayor brought up about the intersection. I believe the county is going to undertake a study
I saw that.
uh, for that intersection. So how that's going to move forward and what improvements are going to be recommended. You know, we hope that the consultant that's going to be hired to do that will do it as quickly as possible. That intersection is of quite concern and has been for many, many years. So there is movement on that. And I foresee, you know, some form of improvement at some point in time.
Yes, Ireland.
Um, just clarification on the price, if you don't mind. Is this being done by in heath staff? Installation?
No.
Um, do we have some kind of a quote? That the labor stands out to me as quite low, and I'd be very surprised if we got each one down for five thousand dollars labor. Maybe you have experience with that, but
not. Actually, I I I believe there's a good buffer in there, and this is in discussions with the county as well. The cost the cost per intersection or per, yeah, per intersection, per crosswalk is consistent to the recent tender from Smith Falls. So I'm based on the numbers. I mean, a hundred percent. We put this out there, right? Time of year, shortage of work, contractor's not interested, perhaps it is, it is low, but I think it's safe at this point, or it's a ballpark. And
and follow up on the with respect to the county's contribution of one, one of the three. How did that conversation go? I mean, given that it's there, all three locations are county roads. Would would a fifty fifty split not be more appropriate? How how was the decision made that they're paying for one of three?
So that basically, it's the municipality wanted the crosswalks in. And the county came to me or suggested if if you're putting these in, they're going to have to have the signal lights or if you choose to move this way, that they would contribute to put the one in. So we consider ourselves lucky.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any further? Nothing further, other questions or comments? All right, well, though. All those in favor? Okay. Uh, nine, one, three, Bolton and Pioneer Ditching and Brushing Tender Award. That the committee of the whole received this report for information. And that the committee directs staff to bring the final request to award Bolton and Pioneer Ditching slash Brushing Tender to Arnett Brothers Construction Limited for the submitted cost of three hundred sixty five thousand ninety eight dollars excluding H S T as outlined in this report to the September twenty second regular council meeting. And that the original capital amount of three hundred fifty thousand nine hundred be utilized and the remaining required fourteen thousand one hundred ninety eight be drawn from the working reserve. And further that the manager of Public Works is authorized to issue any and all change orders as required to prevent delays and claims against the municipality. Do I have a mover and a seconder? We'll move out, the mayor, seconded by deputy mayor. Any questions or concerns from committee? Nothing. The staff want to add anything?
Nothing really to add. I guess it's outlined in the report, maybe for the the benefit of the the public. Or just a quick summary. So these were included for capital projects for rehard surface after detailed investigations. We've looked at it and determined it's best to to deal with the drainage. So these contracts, this tender is for both roads to deal with the drainage, cover replacement and brushing so that thereafter would would open the door up more for discussions of possibility of hard surface.
All right, thank you. All right, call boat, all those in favor? Gary? Nine point one point four, Village of Merrickville Water and Wastewater Management Plan Table of Contents. That the committee of the whole receive for information, the table of contents for the village of Merrickville Water and Wastewater Master Plan. I have a mover and a seconder.
I'll move.
Second right mayor. Any questions or comments from the committee? All right, the staff want to add anything? Pretty straightforward, I think.
I, yeah, it's, I think it's it's outlined there on the table of context. That's what Neil and I and staff G P two G have been working toward is getting the data to to start, but to continue on with the the infrastructure master plan.
All right, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Gary, nine point two, Fire Department. It seems to be nothing there today. So we'll move on to nine point three, the Finance Department. Nine point three point one, Community Grants Program Policy Revised. That the committee will hold received the information the report concerning the revised community grants program policy. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Hold on, mayor, the seconder? Second by deputy mayor? Any questions or comments from committee? All right.
I know. That's all I've lined in the report.
Okay, I guess we were.
Just a quick one. So these would go under recreation, another recreation.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm trying to find my place. The report identifies or make shows examples of organizations that are typically supported annually. And they're they're the ones that that could get get dollars. Do we have a a similar kind of list? Or those that only ask but annually ask certain kind?
Yes, it's on the second page at the bottom. Yeah.
And and do those organizations need to provide the post event or year end reports?
So some some of them do, like, we don't ask the cooperative play group or to do that or the public school for their lunches. We do run their field, does provide them though. Um, chambers, commerce would fits anything bigger like that, but not for the smaller events in the city. Yeah.
Yeah, that that was my concern, that some of the organizations that only need in kind, they don't have enough governance structure.
No, it's just for a waiver rate for one event. I don't include the the post report with their check and stuff like that.
Yeah. And just because they don't show up on the list doesn't mean that they aren't considered.
Yeah, okay.
All right, this was Ireland, against Ireland.
One of the attachments was the previous bylaw twenty three dash twenty nineteen, which is the the existing community grant program policy. So I'm unclear as to what changes are recommended for that.
There are no changes recommended. What we're recommending is that the ones that we support every year, which is against it, it's not part of the policy. It's it goes against the policy that we just make the decision to put those in the budget. So that these will remain true to the policy, which is to support new initiatives, not comes to funding. So we're not asking to change the policy. We're just recommending that the ones who continually annually support, we put them in the recreation budget instead.
And recommend that we follow it.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. We're not following it at all, you know.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Do you have a a timeframe in mind for when an event stops being new? You know, let's say Porch Fest was brand new this past year. Well, what if they come back next year and the year after? And at what point do you say you no longer qualify for?
I think second years, anything after the first years.
Unless it's a new initiative, something different.
Yeah, unless they're going to switch it up.
Yep.
And that's the same as was stated here with the bear, any of the ones that do get consistent funding. If they're going to implement a new and and approve do that, then that would still be eligible for the for that, something new, but not just the same old thing every year, every year, every year. So this is, this is an opportunity to keep things fresh that we apply this policy to and then get a consistent funding to the to the ones that we always support.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Mr. Chair, if I may, have we, and if I miss, if I missed, and I apologize, but have we calculated what the extra cost of this is going to be? So if we're going to take repeat requests year after year for community grants and move them into the regular queue of a budget. And are we leaving the community grants at the same amount?
No.
Or are we adjusting that? And I have no problem with leaving it at the same amount, but what would be the additional cost? If that's something that we'd be able to.
Fifteen thousand dollars to we put them all in between ten to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, in its entirety. So I think in the, I think we budget a line item for X amount of community funding in addition to the ones that we're going to.
Yeah, and the fifteen thousand, the ones we consistently.
There's a line item for Friends of the Reader, Friends of the Reader was already there. So I would anticipate we would budget a certain amount each year, which would bring us in line with what we've been consistently spending. So we wouldn't be reducing anything. We'd just be firming it up.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be any additional cost.
So my question, Mr. Chair, was just so that are we identifying that? That's all. I mean, I support the initiative to move forward because we do year after year support them. So bringing them into into an opportunity where they're they know funding is coming is is a good thing because they're they are a large component to the makeup of our municipality. So now I support it. I just wanted to know if we were identifying so that we have a line item that you know,
Yeah.
the community grants were ten thousand, but we've decided to put seven thousand extra dollars into the budget. And we're still identifying the ten thousand for new opportunity, or we are reducing them. So it's identified for the public to understand what we've done. That's all.
And I think one of the things we're going to look at differently going forward to is that previous years, we've we've our in kind services and labor fees, they were based on that. What would we get if we rented it? And we're not going to look at it that way anymore because oftentimes it's not rented. So we're just going to use like a Hayden Hydro and and just the basic services. That's where we're going to allocate funding amount to be weighed. Not what we've seen for a full rental, because most of the time it's not going to be rented anyway. So we have to be practical. And I think it's going to make a difference in the bottom line too. We're not really funding than that full amount of rental fees. We're just trying to be practical about what we assess that amount to be. So all everything else we're doing costs. Yeah.
All right. There's no one who questions or comments. We'll move on. I'll call call a vote. All those in favor? Right, carried. Uh, nine point three point two, Summary Sheet Tax Supported Assets. That the committee of the whole of the corporation of the village of Merrickville will receive the information sheet summarizing the tax supported asset management plan presented on July fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Ask for a mover or a seconder? Do I have a mover and a seconder?
I'll move. I'll second.
All right, moving second. Any questions or comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor, it'll be your first opportunity.
I I really don't. I was, I thank staff for engaging in this process. It's going to be very helpful as we consider budgets and the future. So nicely done.
No further comments.
Okay, there's you want to have the floor?
I don't just if there's any questions.
There's no questions or concerns. We'll move on, move on. I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Harry? Nine point four, Building Department, nine point four point one, Heritage Designated Property, one forty seventh Saint Lawrence Street. That the committee of the whole receive for information, the documents provided for the consideration to allow a twenty foot by thirty five foot addition onto the heritage designated property. And further that the committee direct staff to bring proposed application to the September twenty second regular council meeting and recommended approval. Do I have a mover and a seconder?
I'll move.
Move, do I have a seconder? Against Ireland? Any questions or comments from the committee? Give him another chance.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. I think this is something that came to the committee of adjustments at one point in time where we had made some minor adjustments to allow this application to move forward. So I'm glad to see that it's come to the table. Just interested in the comments from my colleagues.
Australian? Nothing other than to say it's perfectly fine with the application.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you. So this application did come to the Heritage Committee as well. They had one discussion. Heritage Committee, of course, doesn't exist right now. So that means that council takes on the responsibilities of evaluating the impact of changes on a heritage building. So we do need to look at this application through that lens. From my point of view, I would like to see a rear elevation that includes the the building behind. So it's drawing A two dot zero. If an outline of the existing building could be included, it would help to give us an idea of the impact of this addition on the rear of of the heritage structure itself.
Oh, yeah, I'll give the chance. Then there was no rear elevation on what I had sent you?
There's a rear elevation of the addition.
Okay.
But it doesn't show how that impacts on the building behind. You know, you know what I mean? So the building, the roof lining and and the building.
So that that would be the addition right there.
This is the addition.
Yeah, and that's actually, I I noticed in here, it just says a twenty by thirty five. It is a twenty by thirty five, but it's two story. It's not one.
Okay.
It's a doubles.
So something that if you're looking at it in terms of the impact on a heritage building, the height of an addition can have and sometimes have a negative impact on the heritage characteristics. So it's called the defining characteristics of the property. Our definition of the defining characteristics in bylaw doesn't talk about the rear of the building and talks about the front of the building. But we still need to at least pay attention to the impact that it could have.
So you got staff. So in in talking with the owner, I believe the rear of that building, the second floor had already gone to the Heritage Committee and was permitted to be added on. So it's not, it was not part of the original structure back there, from what I understand.
Yeah, so designation applies to the whole building and the whole property. So and I'm not saying right now that we should or shouldn't, but I think we need a little bit more information.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I have no problem with the application as it stands and and there was discussion at both committees on moving this forward and approving it. If you're familiar with the building, it's inset. So there's another building off, I guess if you're facing the back of the building, it would be on your left hand side. It's the bookstore. So the addition is going to be well hidden in behind that store. With the adjacent buildings, we have separation through parking lot at the back of the building, plus there's an open area of the the other building that would be directly behind it. So there's a large separation and it is inset. So I think the impact would be minimal and we're looking at a rear of a building. And I think with the addition to this would only add enhancements to the building as it sits presently. So I have no I have no uh concerns uh about moving forward with it as it stands, so just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
So so something that the Heritage Committee members would do would be to go for a walk past. Um try to imagine the the addition in the space. And and I would encourage us to do the same because we have to take the Heritage Act in our hands now and and deal with it. Competently. So that would be something that could be done within the next two weeks before we make an actual vote on. Whether or not to approve the addition. I think it it it's our job to do a little bit of homework.
Do you think further?
Yeah, I guess since this is committee, we do recommendations, recommendations, that doesn't hurt to make the decision anyway at that the final approval comes at the council meeting anyway. So I don't think that uh it uh that the mayor bars recommendation uh doesn't slow this down anymore. The approval coming of the committee meeting at the council meeting anyway. I I I would uh. Do a very supportive, would you suggest?
And Deputy Mayor Burr, you're also asking for better drawings of the rear of the building? Rear elevation of the old building with the new building, correct?
Yeah, so drawing A two zero, just showing the outline of the existing building. Behind it. I'm thinking it's actually about eight lines.
Okay, so if there's nothing, no further questions or comments, I will call vote. All those in favor? Carried. Nine point five, CEO administration, nine point five point one, background integrity commissioner and legal services. That the committee of a whole received for informational report regarding background-related integrity commission and legal services. Uh I have a mover and a seconder. Lumber to a seconder? Uh any comments or uh questions from committee?
Mayor? Chair, uh if I may, something here to figure out where I am and uh. Uh staff had put forward some recommendations on um uh possible um integrity commissioner. Uh opportunities and I did some research on those recommendations. And I think uh that we could take a look at uh Ellen Frye. Um she also is the deputy, there is the integrity commissioner for Brockville and Rita Lakes. And she is with A D R Chambers. Uh did some research on their. On their um on them and I couldn't find anything negative. So uh there's an opportunity perhaps. Uh the person is familiar familiar with the area. It's a firm out of Toronto, like they all are, but uh. Uh this is something, someone that I'd be uh interested in pursuing if staff would, if my colleagues and staff. Would bring back uh that opportunity to our meeting uh for council to move forward with that.
As a girl.
Yeah, if if we're going to be looking at other names for integrity commissioner, I think it should be driven by, we should have several names uh brought back by staff. Um and the other thing is, I think, believe the provincial government's sitting again in October. Um I I don't see any harm in waiting. See, they may come up with a decision as early as then on what the new recommendations for. Uh whether there will be new recommendations for how to choose an integrity commissioner or not. Um and uh I could, and see we can, if staff can meanwhile collect names um and uh bring them back to the next committee of the whole. Uh but in the meantime, we may have our decision made for us um in the next couple of months anyway, so I. What staff is recommending, I I fully support right here. Um but I mean, if we want to bring back names, let's bring several names, uh and that staff have done some work, then we could all do it at the same time.
Uh my opinion is we don't want to wait until there's a big rush for other municipalities who are also looking to separate their integrity commissioner. And are looking for uh those people, I think we can get ahead of the curve easily now. We've already identified the a previous meeting. There's an issue with needing to divide the the two roles. So I think we gave staff that the that direction that we wanted to do that. And we should proceed with the uh. The tendering of that uh or request for proposals or whatever the right uh way to proceed is.
I just want to quickly um address Council Ireland. The only reason I would say is like waiting in October, just in case they come up with. They may recommend a pool of integrity commissioners. It may go to an integrity commissioner um office where it doesn't go to. Um that like I said, wait, wait to see with that. If it looks like it's gonna take its time, I agree, let's get a a tentative. If we can wait until then, maybe the next, uh once, once the government sits, we may know what direction they're going to take.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you again for the second opportunity. Uh to the point that Counselor Ireland just made, uh that was the discussion that we had at our previous uh committee of a holes. Was for uh the province was moving forward with new legislation to. Have a separation of legal and integrity commissioner and uh to Mr. Counselor Ireland's point. Was that we want to get ahead of you. So uh staff was directed to bring back suitable uh considerations. For the committee of a whole in September, so they've had July, August, and now we're sitting in September to bring those names forward. To once again task them with bringing more names forward. Uh there was plenty of time uh for that to be done, and that was the direction that this committee had done. Previously, so uh I think if the C O could only find. A handful of integrity commissioner opportunities, we go with a decision on one of those, so. I don't want to prolong it anymore. There's four hundred and forty-four municipalities. The majority of them will be looking for integrity commissioners. If we can get ourselves ahead of the queue and get ourselves settled in. Uh and uh in a position where we're far more advanced than the rest of the uh the municipalities, that would benefit our rate pairs.
I think we did come up with uh several names that are currently uh being used by other municipalities. I'd like to get a costing from them and factor that in, so I think if we go out and do a request. For their documents and bring them back and then assess them and then uh I think that's reasonable. If we have, we have a number of names and a lot of them I've had experience dealing with, but there is a huge difference in cost. Some of them, some of them, so I think all those things need to be considered. I'm sure they're all fine. It's just we need to consider how much it costs too, so we can have that information. We can go and look for that right now.
And Mr. Chair, that's to to the point, I think, is that this was an opportunity for us to see what the availability was. I think the instruction. From the Canadian hole to staff is to bring back those numbers for us at our council meeting and with those defined costs. And then council can make a decision to move forward. So I think that was the intent and purpose on. Uh allowing a specific amount of time, which we've had two months in order for all this information to be gathered. And I think we're at the point now where uh we need staff to bring back this. Here are some recommendations here, the cost, council makes the decision.
That was planned.
Deputy Mayor, do you have something to add?
Um just a question, when Counselor Gurrell spoke about a provincial pool of integrity commissioners. Um what would happen then if we had our own, if we had already appointed our own integrity commissioner?
I think one of the, one of the, there's always a a an escape clause in every agreement that we sign. So that would be factored into the, to the assessment. So there were, there's, you can always back away once a contract is signed, especially with those, if there are provincial um. Considerations given, but I can tell you, most of them, um I know one at least that would be on the list. So I think it's something that we just gather the information and maybe by that time, capital province will have made a decision. But it doesn't hurt to to get some numbers. I think it's a great idea to have a pool. And again, when that's gonna happen, nobody has those.
All right, if there's no further questions or comments, I will call call a vote.
Mr. Chair, we're just calling to vote for the integrity commissioner because I think there was an attachment here for legal as well.
All right, is there any more discussion?
The motion was just for accepting information right now.
Background integrity commissioner and legal services, so I would like to um. Uh since I moved the motion, I'd like to also have uh an opportunity to state that I think uh. What we need to do is also bring back the numbers for uh. For legal services to the same meeting, so that we understand. There's a a list of uh. Possibilities here. I think we can eliminate a couple. Uh Stuart Corvair is just family law. And criminal law, uh Kelford and Dubois is the same. The only ones that offer any kind of municipal uh opportunity uh with uh lawyers that are dedicated to the municipal. Uh act are uh Alton Alt and Borden, Ladner and Jervan. So those are the only, and of course Cunningham Swan. But uh I think cost between the three of them uh would be uh. What I'd be looking for is the other two are irrelevant. They don't participate in municipal um law.
Why would their name show up?
I have no idea why staff brought those names forward.
Well, that's, that's who they use. That's who the, I contacted everybody on this list. They provided me with the information. They use, they probably use them for specific things, like they might use one for um H R. They might use one for land division stuff. They might use one for, or assessments and easements and all that type of stuff, but. They, I know Hicks Morgan is an H R lawyer. Um yeah, they, and then one is a general. They use them for general. And then they have another one for Steve Menards is for specialty. That would probably be. Uh one thing or another, but these are all directly from the C O's that they, that I contacted. They're from there.
Yeah, just uh, Mr. Chair, just to follow up is that I just went to their websites and uh looked for services that they offer. And I know Kelford and Dubois, they're my personal lawyers, and I know they don't do municipal law.
It says general on there.
They, they had maybe uh had uh provided some advice to Smith Falls at one time. But they're not uh specifically focused on uh the municipal.
And that's, that's the most important thing that we need to consider.
Yes, and that's why I I sort of narrowed it down to a couple of good opportunities. I mean, I think uh what we need to do is find out what the the actual cost is and we can make a decision from there.
Yeah, just to put my comment in is that um it's it's a, it's a year leading into an election year. I don't necessarily see why, we have no issues with our um current um legal representation. I don't know, I think to give staff more. Work uh to look for that, that would concentrate on the integrity commissioner. Um and just not, not worry about that part. We, the staff recommends, the the recommendation is to stay with Cunningham and Salon with the broad range of services. Uh and I'm, I think that's, I'm fine with, I'm satisfied with that. I support that with staff. Staff going on with that. There's gonna be a lot of other stuff they're gonna be visiting themselves with right now, so that's gonna be my recommendation.
So, Mr. Chair, is there interest from the rest of the members to uh bring back with their opportunities or? As the council is suggesting, we stay with the status quo.
Like a straw vote, whether we go for a full uh costing on legal and uh. And and the director commissioner, or do we just do the director commissioner? So those. Does seem fair. Do you want to, do you want to debate it?
I, I'm actually in favor of the recommendations from staff. They've taken a look. They're aware that things might be changing significantly and. As Counselor Gurrell says, we're well served by the the people that we have right now, so. I would like to follow the recommendations of staff. Oh, which was to maintain the status quo until we have more clarity from the province.
I'm in favor of uh going out to market for both services. Think it feels like we're digressing into something that was already discussed at a previous meeting, or we did. We, as a council, decided the right thing to do was to test the market and see what we could get. When I look at the the table, Cunningham Swan has got eighteen clients. And some other ones have very few, so I wonder if we're really getting good value from, from them. And uh the time um that's required to get good recommendations, I've I've got to question that, so some of the others have. Fewer clients and could potentially provide better overall value, so I I really want to see their proposal and what they would propose to us.
Mr. Chair, I think to Counselor's point, uh all this work was generated because there was an interest showed at this table to go out and do so. Uh so now there seems to be uh. Some kind of a different approach. We'll put it that way. I think what we need to do is we need to have uh defined numbers. And then we can, we can make a decision from there. Staff has already initiated this, put this work in over the last couple of months. And we're at the point now where we need to see what the actual costs are according to. Uh as far as Counselor Iron is concerned, yeah, I mean Cunningham Swan has a, has a, has a reputation, but I mean, they have a lot of clients. So how can we focus or doing some research? There are others that offer the same services with the same qualified uh legal representatives on their uh. Uh within their uh law offices, so I mean, if we can get some good service for a better price, why would we not at least consider it? And that's all this is. Bring back the numbers to council to see uh what council's interest is at the time. So we direct the staff to do this, and I think we should continue down that path. Thank you.
And are there further comments from outside the table? My, my thoughts were too, I, I am very curious knowing what the comparable quote would be. That's why I would be in favor of it. Because we don't know what the other are charging or or whether they have the appetite really to take us on, but I think it's important we at least ask the question.
I think it was important to uh to find out the areas um that we have been focusing on in the past years. And I've found it very interesting to see that thirty percent is taken up by the integrity commissioner and the amount of time. That it takes to do those complaints is is significant when you look at all of our other costs. Um a lot of it, I think we're doing really well with what we need this solicitor for. I think we've ironed out a lot of the. The concerns that we once had. Um moving forward, I think it's uh, I think we're doing well. And I think having the data, when we go out to look for the other quotes for people, at least now we know. What areas to focus on where they can, they can provide the services, so all of it's good background material.
We should just, what are, we are moving forward with going out on full tenders, it sounds?
Yeah, for both. I think that's what the consensus was at the table.
So I think you need to amend the motion to, to, if that's council's wish. Then we need to amend the motion to include that.
Mr. Ireland, Deputy Counselor Ireland, or Mayor, you wanna?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh if I may, just to amend the motion that uh we direct staff to go out and bring back uh. The numbers for both legal and for integrity commissioner to our next meeting of council. So that uh we can uh have a discussion and uh see how we're going forward from there.
Is two weeks gonna be enough to do that?
They're lawyers. I don't know.
Yeah, it's something, how about the next committee of the whole meeting?
I think, uh if I may, Mr. Chair, uh as we stated, staff's been working on this for over two months. Since uh for the summer, so staff's had plenty of time to do some research. They do, uh the C O has done some research on some of the opportunities that she has on this uh on this agenda. So I think it's just uh the C O uh taking a look at apples for apples and bringing back numbers. And I think that would not be a difficult thing to do.
Well, it's not difficult for me to do. It's just for them to respond. Yeah, that's, that's the hard part.
Well, if we don't get, we don't get the response in time, well then we can always defer it to another meeting, but I think. Uh a couple of weeks uh timeline should be satisfied, and if we get, you know, three out of the. Sex, then we just have a discussion. There's obviously would be no interest if they're not, don't want to uh reach out within a two weeks timeframe. That's how I would read it.
Okay, so I'll call a vote on the amended motion.
Uh so we have Mayor Cameron move. Do we have a seconder for them? And the wording is, and further that staff be directed to obtain quotes for both integrity commissioner and legal services. To bring back to the September twenty second regular council meeting.
I'll call a vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Exceed?
Exceed.
All right, we'll move on. Nine point five point two analysts of planning, engineering revision that the committee of the whole received for information, the analysis of planning and engineering services provision report. And further that the staff be directed to bring the, to the regular meeting of September twenty second, twenty twenty five, the results of the responses obtained from the consultants and submissions with a recommendation for consideration regarding how the municipality will proceed with planning and engineering services. Have a mover?
I'll move. Seconder?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments from committee?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think it's the same conversation that we've had with the previous two opportunities on this agenda. Staff has had a, has had a couple of months to take a look at some opportunities. I think there's a couple of opportunities. I think my interest would lie with looking at Aqua since they already provide a service and enhancing that service would, I think, be a good addition to, to our municipality as they are the caretakers of our water and wastewater system and have a depth of knowledge. So their input on how we maintain and further enhance and develop that asset, I think would be a tremendous asset to our, our ratepayers. We have had a good relationship with them. I'm aware of it for the last seven years, so we've had no issues. And every time we've reached out for assistance, they've been there and provided the information without delay for us. So it's something that I think I would be interested in finding out what that extended contract would cost. As far, as far as the planning, we all know that that Mr. Simons is retiring. And if we were to look at another engineering opportunity, I think bringing in a planner would be something that we should look at. So I think there's some recommendations. We'd also need some numbers on that as well. Thank you.
And any other comments or questions? Councillor?
Uh, yeah, I was looking at the, the one option of a junior planner plus external assistant and an engineering consultant. I know we considered a, a junior planner worried about enough work, but a junior planner could also be dedicated to grant writing as well. They would understand what some of the we're looking at in, in terms of infrastructure, how we want to develop that kind of thing. That might be as a consideration if that's one of the possibilities. But I do like having like a staff member, but I am also interested in all the options that you bring back that we can, we can consider which one, which ones work best for us.
Deputy Mayor Burr?
I think, I think I continue to try to balance the need for in-house planner contracted. So the options that we have with Aqua are engineering, but not planning. So we can have one or the other, and it's still difficult for me to understand which one is easier to keep in-house if the plan was to have some in-house and some contract. And, and I, I noticed that staff doesn't have recommendations in this one. There are options available. And I'm still thinking about those options, I guess. I think the the costing on that, on the, how much it would cost to have in-app services is, that's a true number. I took into account all of the factors that, that take up the page. Now, what I may have overestimated is the amount for an engineering consultant. If we do go with Aqua, that may be overestimated, especially since we have done a lot of the engineering work previously. That might be high, but as far as the actual salary for the planner, it's pretty well bang on.
Okay.
Chair? Yes, if no one else has a question, I'd like a second opportunity. And the reason why I'm interested in, in Aqua is because when our engineering service through our present provider is on site at a subdivision, Aqua is part of the conversation. So they're brought in for their knowledge and expertise within the system as well. So I mean, you know, condensing that opportunity and going with Aqua is something that I would like to consider. And as far as planning is concerned, you know, ultimately, if we were a size of municipality that had an extended amount of interest in growth, it would make more sense to bring in-house. I think presently we were not that size yet. And, and hopefully we're not that size for quite a long time. But I think the amount of requests that we get at this point in time, leaving it to a consultant, a planning consultant would be the best spent dollars tax wise, because bringing on a full-time staff, we had tried that in the last term and it didn't really, to me, didn't really benefit us because the junior planner always had to go to the senior planner, which means we were paying a staff member and we were paying the planner at the same time. So we were doubling our costs. And with a planning opportunity, we could have a staff member be an intake person, take the information and forward it to our planner. So that we're cutting down on those in-house costs. Presently, we have a, a senior planner coming in every Wednesday. And there's a lot of staff support along with that as well. So I think looking at a more refined approach to infrastructure and planning, I think is something that would benefit us financially. So that's why my interest is in bringing that. And I looked and did some background research on some of the opportunities brought forward by the CAO and Forten was the one that sort of stood out for me. They're all big, big firms, but the proximity of Forten to us, they have in the city of Ottawa as well as in Toronto. So I mean, there are some advantages. There are a few other ones that I'd be interested in, but they declared a conflict and there is another one that no longer in business. So, you know, and McIntosh and Perry is also another big group, but they had no response as well. So I think if we bring back the ones that are on this form and find out what the costs are would be in line with what we've decided to do because this is a result because we've given direction to so. Thank you.
Yeah, I have responses from Forten for the planning services. I have responses from Cambium for engineering services for the landfill. See, uh, Aqua does not do any services engineering other than water and wastewater. So, but they have a outside agencies, they have a third party. So they would consult with the third party for them to come to do it. So they do offer the service for planning for the, not planning, but the engineering for the water and wastewater. And if we need them for something else, they have people that we can go to. So I was I was surprised their ability to help us in that area, but I don't want to presume anything. This is council decision. But Forten is a good company too.
Believe against fire and I won't rule.
Thanks, yeah. Main thing for me is standing back, looking at from the fifty thousand foot level, we're a small municipality, right? We have to be very careful with fixed costs in, in particular. So I wouldn't be in support of any type of in-house planner. I think to me, it's an administrative role and a partial role for someone to do the paperwork shuffling and to feed an external consultant on an as-needed basis, and they would then be a variable cost to us. And we, we can't predict what going forward, what kind of activity we're going to have as far as new construction and applications for severance and so on. So, you know, given that we're not the final decision maker on these things anyway, we're just a commenter to the county. We need some, we need some competence and expertise to advise us when advice is required, but that can easily be sourced on a variable basis from consultant.
Deputy Mayor Burr?
Yeah, I, I think what I have to say, it kind of follows on to councillor Iron's observation. How much of an administrative burden would it be if we decided to use multiple firms which specialize, we have a specific need, we go to the company that can address the specific need rather than any kind of one point. That's basically all you're going to get for the most part. Very few enough do is JV two G J S with the full service. So if, if it doesn't become unmanageable, or once it does become unmanageable, we change. But in the meantime, build our own pool of experts to draw on. Like councillor Ireland says, when we have a specific challenge, we go to the right person. I, I think that's what we're, if we don't stay in the status quo, I don't think we have any other choice but to, to do the different services. All right.
Mayor? That, yeah, to both the deputy mayor and councillor Ireland. And I think with conversations that I've had with staff, you know, those opportunities to have a number of companies with specific qualifications and expertise is, you know, something that we could take a look at. We've been going down this path for many, many years. I think a change sometimes is good. So it's something that I would, would not have a problem with having a, an engineering firm, planning firm, and then a expert in landfill. So I mean, I have no problem with that. It's something that I support. I just would like staff to bring back the numbers for council meetings so that we understand what the commitment is and it's something that I would be supportive.
You're, you're going around all of these areas. Do you think that would be viable? Would you do that?
Like specific issues and then go to a specific consultant?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. It might be a little bit more staff time. So I'm not saying that like a burden, but what I'm saying is like the actual turnaround, right? It's just getting that information, getting the consultant up to speed and, you know, can be site meetings, can be more conversations, but it's absolutely doable. I think, I just cost-wise, like if we're to go that route, would council be looking at like a, like a big engineering design or assist with a design that is actually going out for tender to get the best results or best pricing? Which is, is possible again as well. I guess I'm just kind of outlining the possibility of, of not delays, but further longer information to come back to council. Just if it goes to tender, it would have to sit with the public for so long and come back and report back.
Now, Mr. Chair, just to the point, I think all opportunities are on the table. And to the point about staff time, this council's made some decisive decisions on supporting staff and building in support within the departments. So we brought in, we brought in support staff, which we didn't previously have. So all of our areas within the municipality now have the manager and a support staff member. So I think we've put ourselves in a position to to look at different opportunities. So I think, you know, staff time is extremely important, but I think we've put the measures in place to make sure that we are going to have success. So I think there is a lot of staff time spent now with our present situation. So I don't think it would be that much extra. I think it would be probably a little bit more effective and efficient as an intake. And then sending it out to the experts for analysis should this council need that analysis.
A question, a question for Mr. Keane again. I, I hear what you're saying about having to write tenders and put them out. Is it possible in your opinion to build a relationship with a small group of engineering companies, get them familiar with us and, and our concerns and kind of have a we can give them a call and give them the contract is that rather than putting out a public tender? Re-approved supplier. Reapproved vendor, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just the ease, the, and so then we've got engineer companies that know who we are and they're not bidding on something that just came up on, on a Google search.
If we follow her, yeah, tailored within the procurement policy, but absolutely, that'd be the, the better way to go. Versus if there's, if there's constantly tenders or, you know, expressions of interest, RFPs going out, eventually it's, it's inevitable contractors, businesses are just going to quit bidding on it, you know, getting work. So absolutely. So I guess to answer the question, that's, that's feasible.
And I'd like hearing more information about how that could work, the advantages and disadvantages.
Okay, so there's nothing further. Are we satisfied with the way the motion reads or should we reword it?
Right, or really much further? I go on vacation on Thursday. And I'm not, when I think back about having reports to the regular council meeting on twentieth, I am concerned about the turnaround time to be able to put that in there.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we cancel and see. Don't throw any aids. No, I mean, we don't want to put any undue stress, but I think, you know, I think moving forward is does the CEO capture the spirit of the conversation? And when would you be able to provide that information?
Motion that would before about the integrity.
Yeah, we forgot about your vacation. I apologize for that. But when would it be a reasonable?
Committee of the whole would be a doable thing.
For November? Or October, geez, I missed twenty twenty four, now I missed.
I'd feel better than October, honestly, because I'm not going to be able to deliver to the, I'm just not going to happen at council.
So would you be, was there any staff member that could gather some information for you while you're away so that you could?
I'll send it out before I go. And then when I get back, I can give my.
That gives them time.
That gives them time to respond.
Yeah, that'll, that'll work for me. It's just not, I can't have a report.
So my question to you, Chair, to the clerk, do we need to do anything specific in the way of readjusting what we've already voted on and approved to move forward so that we give the CAO ample time to enjoy her vacation?
To the motion that was passed to have me bring it to council and, and just make that committee of the whole instead of that. I'll page you in.
Should we vote on this one before we make that friendly amendment or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll deal with this one and we'll do a friendly amendment to this motion. And further that staff be directed to bring to the committee of the whole on October fourteenth.
Yeah.
And then we can do, once we vote on that.
So I'll vote, well, I'll call a vote on what Julia or the clerk just stated, stated. All in favor? Okay, and then we will go back up to nine point five one and have a friendly amendment to that.
Could we capture all those in the friendly amendment? So we don't have to do three separate ones or did it, did it straight separate?
Well, we just voted on nine point five point two and then in the minutes, I can note the friendly amendment for, which doesn't need to be voted on.
Okay.
For the other.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on then. Nine point five point, nine point five point three transit options that the committee of the whole received for information, the reports concerning options for partnering for rural trans, transit. Ask for a mover or a second. Do I have a mover or a second?
I'll move.
A second?
A second.
Second? Any questions or comments from the committee? Yep, Councillor?
Uh, yeah, so I, this will be receiving this for information. There is apparently interest in, in, in the village. I know that some if there's a bit of a cost to us and per ride, I don't think the final numbers have been determined, but I think it's worth exploring further. I know the service is starting in, in Kentville on September fifteenth, their additional service. I was speaking with the staff member, it was by a chance about to turn on the road, that has been the driver behind this initiative in Kentville. And she said she's been receiving calls at the North Kentville office for it. Repose, I think, is for two stops here. And then there would be then outlet for the, to, to commute to Lime Bank Road from, from Merrickville. That, and I mean, if we want to look at it, although it's a costing, it's also an investment in the village. It encourages those who may consider having to move because they don't have the transit service as a transit service. Like, these are just some options that to consider. As a transit service, um like these are just some options that to consider and just to improve some uh quality of life for people. Who don't have ready access to cars and this uh bit, little bit more of um. Uh a certain, like I said, ex- explore further, there's nothing, we we would not be beholden to any contracts or anything like that. But uh it's something that we may get more information as we go forward and how it it works for them. And I have the two spots she had proposed, I think it's in there on off of County Road twenty three a stop and then. Uh one somewhere central Merrickville. I mean, two rides a day available to Lime Bank Road Station um in uh. For for maybe computers, a commuter's interest in that and then then on demand, depending on on where it is. Like some portions of Woolford, like off of Bolton that are close to uh right, a budding in North Granville. Uh that wouldn't necessarily be much of a stretch for them to go out there to pick uh people up on on demand, so. They would like, as I said, this is something certainly worth exploring, I don't want us to dismiss it offhand, uh and I do think there is some interest in it.
Any other questions or comments, yes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um um. I think in in concept, it's a good idea, uh perhaps, you know, twenty years from now, we've had opportunities in the village uh over my lifetime here. Where there was uh services similar to this provided through uh a private administrator. And uh they didn't last long because initially people were interested. But uh within months, uh they fell, uh we were having a bus, school bus service back and forth to Ottawa. Uh initially, it was a full bus and then within six months, it was down to ten fifteen people that were interested, they weren't making any money. Uh so that's why they folded and packed it in, we're looking at thirty nine dollars and change. Per ride, which uh North Granville is is costing to the rider five dollars a ride. And the dedicated service uh back and forth, my understanding. To uh connect with O C Transpo is out of North Granville. And that secondary bus will become an on demand and they're doing on demand. Door to door within Brenville, but that opportunity is not provided to us, so anybody. Other than uh a few doors down from where the stock would be on twenty three or in the village. Would need a vehicle to access this and we would need to build a bus stop. Which would require a bus shelter, which would require maintenance, which would require cleaning daily. Which would require a dedicated staff member to do that in specific hours, Monday through Sunday. Uh working with O C Transpo for thirty plus years, it's something that you need to do. We'd also need to have an area for parking right. Because if somebody from Bolton Road or Pioneer Road or Landu and Odd Road wanted to use it, they'd need a vehicle to get them to the bus stop. So there's a lot more. That needs to be calculated into this, and when this first came to council. I had uh suggested that we reach out and do a survey with the public to see what the interest is. This is a forty two thousand and change commitment a year. And this is what the number is because North Granville got um. Monies from the Ontario government, once North Granville assumes full responsibility, that number will grow. So. I think if we're going to take a look at what the actual interest is, we need to do a survey. And people have to understand that when they take the bus from Merrickville. Into North Granville because they want to do some grocery shopping. They need to carry the groceries on that bus, carry the groceries. From the bus stop to wherever their home is on twenty three or the village, or they have to stand out in the cold. With bags of groceries waiting for their rider to come and pick them up if we don't provide a spot for them to park their vehicle. Which will come at an additional cost, so, you know, being in transit my whole life. I understand uh that the cost is never recuperated through. Through the the initial payment from the rider, right? So O C Transpo uh is a very uh positive endeavor. And I think we need to, before we start spending taxpayers' money, we need to actually source the taxpayers to see what's happening. Because I'm standing in North Granville at the grocery store and I make a call because I want to come back home. And as we can see in the write ups, there's a huge demand in North Granville, it's North Granville's bus. So they're gonna pick up fifteen people, they're gonna drop fifteen people in North Granville off before they drive me back here to to Merrickville. So I think we need to do a lot more research before we make any kind of commitment, thank you.
I can respond, this is on demand, North, but it's it's not about whether they go out of business or not, that the 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 services that. Uh you were referring to one was the country, um. Um I think it uh it was, it was a limousine service, the other was a school bus and that that went on for for years and that was initiated by Merrickville. This is North Granville's program, so it would be on demand, so if no one from Merrickville calls, no one, we don't get charged for any riders. This would be based per rider when they call and I think when people use the bus, they understand that they'll have, they know how to use bus. Um it it's just like, it's just an on demand, I mean, I'm I'm game for like, if we have a uh, if. We have survey on uh like see how, what what the interest is, and I think that's a, that's a good idea, uh like I said, it's not. We we paid per rider, not the additional to start cost, that's what North Granville did. And uh and and like I said, it's it's a service sometimes we may consider, if we're willing to spend millions of dollars on roads for people to drive on them. Maybe we can consider a few thousand for people who don't access cars and as I said, it's it's not not to close the conversation, it's just to. Um you know, keep it open, see what what it costs, get more information by all means. Uh but it's it's not like, uh it's it's a service that's provided by North Granville. And then they would have two stops and I and and when I just speak the the two stops, it still may, we do double check that that the commuter service. Would extend to Merrickville, and it's it's just worth talking about and I do think it's worth reaching out to people in the community to see if there's interest.
Uh just in the name of time, I think we should take the vote on receiving the report. Deputy Mayor.
Um yeah, I'm happy to learn more, um costs included, the practical realities. But the opportunity to provide a service for those who don't have a car or can't drive anymore. I think it's worth exploring, especially if we're talking about future growth and opportunities. No harm in finding out more.
It's a new, uh yeah, just uh. I I know about commuter service because we had telly service through O C Transpo that serviced Crystal Beach for many years. Um it was a hit and miss, but we also have to understand that, you know, this is a new service we're looking at and we have the. Uh a service that we're going to uh use taxpayers' money that is only going to uh benefit. A handful of people, so once again, the municipality is supporting something or considering supporting something that is not a benefit to all. You know, example, garbage pickup, snow uh sidewalk, snow plowing, so on and so forth, we've got millions of dollars in infrastructure. This money could be better spent in that. Uh you know, those are my comments and I think we shouldn't really move forward with anything until. We've actually had a survey, so rather more information, more costs, I agree. But we need a survey to see what the actual interest is.
I'll call a vote, receive this for information. Vote favor, carried. Uh nine point five point four alternative voting methods for the two thousand and twenty six municipal and school board election. That the committee of the whole received from information, the report regarding the alternative voting methods for the twenty twenty six municipal and school board election. And further that the committee recommend that council authorize alternative voting method of internet and telephone voting for the. Two thousand and twenty six municipal election and further that. Committee direct staff to bring forward the necessary bylaw to the regular meeting to set out. The alternative voting method for the twenty twenty six municipal election. And further that the committee recommend that council authorize the request to sole source electronic voting services to. Intel vote solutions incorporated for the twenty twenty six municipal election, so I have a mover and a seconder. Move a seconder?
A second.
A second, all right, any comments or questions for the committee?
Just clarification, this is essentially the exact same thing we did last election, okay.
All right, if there's nothing further, I'll call a vote, all those in favor? All right, passed. Uh nine five five Canada Day twenty twenty five follow up report. Committee of the whole received from information, the report from the Canada Day committee regarding the twenty twenty five Canada Day event. And further that the committee direct staff to bring the Canada Day committee report to the September twenty second regular council meeting. And recommend approval of the recommendations as presented in the report being to allocate five hundred dollars annually to the Merrickville Agricultural Society from. The Canada Day budget to continue the festivities in Eastern Square each year and do that two hundred and fifty dollars to the Merrickville Firefighters Association. To encourage assistance with traffic control and road closures. And further that the committee recommend council approval of making appointments to the Canada Day. Committee in early twenty twenty six, do I have a mover and a seconder? I'll move, move, seconder?
Second.
Second, any questions or comments from the committee?
Just if I may, uh Mr. Chair, uh just the reason why that we put the two hundred and fifty dollars in for the firefighters association is there's difficulty always. Sourcing O P P, they have limited staff, so at the very last minute, uh that opportunity fell through. So we thought, uh since the firefighters generally uh secure that role. And they have the background, necessary demand in traffic, that it would be a a good thing for us to support them financially. Uh uh through their association, so that was the recommendation and to. Continue to support the event and Eastern's corner goes something else the committee felt was important.
Just a question about naming actual organizations, um we'll just. In the future, if the firemen's association aren't available, do we have to change a bylaw in order to?
No.
Or or the act of society?
No, okay.
Good, any other comments or questions? I will call a vote, all those in favor, carried. Nine five six draft off road vehicles, O R V by law, that the committee of the whole received for information, the draft, O R V by law. And further that staff be directed to bring the final draft O R V by law to September twenty second regular council meeting for final consideration. I have a mover and a seconder. Seconded by the mayor. Any questions or comments from committee?
Right, yeah, this uh proposed bylaw, um which prohibits not permit uh A T Vs on within the confine of the village proper. Hamlets and built up settlement areas matches uh our neighboring municipalities, I've been North Granville. Uh Augusta Township, Front of Young, all have similar bylaws and um. And I, and as we had our two uh members in the gallery explain. Um this has been a long time coming, this has been a request that's been made for quite a while, we've received uh, you know. If remember, some emails we've received last year, we've received a few emails leading into the July fifteenth meeting because there was some thought that we would be moving ahead of this. And as I said, we had uh two comments from now, so I think it's, it just brings us in line with what our neighboring municipalities are doing. And it uh it offers a quality of life for people within uh dense densely built up areas.
I believe. Yes, I did, uh yeah, so I mean, uh we had a question from from the gallery and I think. Uh a quick, uh short explanation is that uh it's allowed through the Highway Traffic Act, what we can do is try to manage it. We have that opportunity as a municipality and uh the route uh quickest to the trails is something that we need to do. I mean, no matter what neighborhood we put it through, there's gonna be uh some resistance, so. Uh we've had plenty of discussion uh on this and uh. It's something that I think is moving forward.
Deputy Mayor.
So I I've read the bylaw and unless I've missed it, we haven't actually described a route. To go from one trail to along a street to cross the river to join another series of trails. We've.
Yes, we have.
We've identified three sections of county roads that um the county has allowed A T Vs on. But getting from say Scotch Line to um. Saint Lawrence Street or County Road forty three, we haven't said. Use H F McLean, don't use Charlotte Street. Um and those those maps, I think in my memory existed in the A T V club proposed. How they were gonna link their network of trails to somebody else's network of trails. So are we in a position to say A T V traffic on H F McLean in order to access? Reed Street in order to access County Road forty three or fifteen or sixteen? Um and then the other portion of the bylaw that prevents. Non residents from roaming the streets of Merrickville in their A T Vs can look after the concerns on Charlotte Street. Or any other of the side streets. Um is that, can we, can we describe an approved route? From the network to the south and the network to the north?
I think it would involve signage. We have to sign.
Is it, is it that there was, there was options? If I remember correctly, there was options at the county center, county has different options of how they're getting to A to B and C. And then is, and then for the municipality to have, there's no options, here is the route throughout the municipality, is that?
I don't, I don't believe the county has identified routes. Routes have been identified by A T V clubs to say this is how they would like to go from this region to that region. Um with the county allowing access to those three sections of our roads helps with that. But there's still some gaps in how people would go from the top of Coller Hill to north of the bridge. And right now, we're hearing that a lot of people go down Charlotte Street or Brock Street and. So if we, H F McLean seems a more natural selection. It's wider, um there are fewer homes um on that street. And it connects directly to County Road fifteen and sixteen.
If my memory serves you right, I thought that's, I thought that's the way the conversation was going, but yeah, but it needs to be stated in the bylaw.
It's not in our bylaw, right now it's stated by an outside organization to their members saying, here's how you do it.
Mr. Chair, I think uh. Councillor Girl probably has it uh brought up on her screen, uh I haven't had the opportunity to do so, but. We had conversations because of the elimination of Andrewsville, which was a direct route across and we allowed uh. A T V traffic across our bridge here and it was up Saint Lawrence to access uh restaurants and gas. It was also identified that they would use Reed Street and go up to H F McLean and they would also use Brock Street to go up to Coller Hill. As a direct connection to the roots, so we've mapped that out and had that conversation, we just haven't brought it back and finalized it. So those were conversations that I recall in my mind, we've already identified specific routes as to A T Vs. Going on other streets, that is something that we would need to send our bylaw officer out or. Uh make the O P P aware, because under the Highway Traffic Act. They are able to ride on other streets, I know as a municipality, we do have the opportunity to identify a route. But to actually. To ensure that they're adhering to that bylaw, that takes other resources, bylaw and police. So I mean, we can't, we can't really. Do anything other than. Look for assistance from the police services or from bylaw, we have identified. The least resistance route and that was Saint Laurent. Up to the gas station, Brock uh Brock Street up to Collers Hill, it was Reed Street up to H F McLean. So that's what I recall, maybe staff can bring that forward, there was a conversation that we had, it was to be. Brought into a bylaw at some point and I think this is where we are.
If I may just, the reason was to keep Brock Street as one of the central streets as a Charlotte. H F McLean is, if you continue down, uh Saint Lawrence or down around Saint um Reed Street up to H F McLean is a saint. It takes you directly to Scotch Line uh up there, so that's, as I said, the whole purpose is to keep them from the um. Side streets of the village, uh and that's, that's the purpose as these gentlemen will attest. That's, that 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 was the reason why uh so many um residents on Brock Street, on Charlotte, we're talking that. That is, those were the problem areas in terms of traffic, so we're not gonna direct it onto another downtown street, we keep it to the porphyry of the village.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so when routes were described that included Brock or Charlotte, at that time. The information was that we can't have, we can't allow them onto county roads. So technically, we couldn't allow them on Saint Lawrence Street, they would have to go through these side streets. So that's changed and the county is allowing A T Vs uh in these key sections as we see in the bylaw. So I think it's time to reconsider how we get people. Um, off of the side streets now that we can put them right on to the county roads. So I I would like to. Like to have.
Can I make a suggestion? That's you, uh, you're going to issue you direct staff to come back with a, a map. Uh, with identified routes to the next council meeting.
I I have a second point in that the new bylaw is tied to fines. Um, and enforcement. So we actually have more teeth. In what we can do with this bylaw than what we could do in the past. So we could put a bylaw officer in uniform. At the bottom of Coller Hill and flag them down and ticket them.
I think you'd have to have a very defined route. I think you have to have signage if you're going to do that. For sure. Can't find if it, the adequate signage.
Didn't think it would turn gray area. I guess it's one thing to have in a bylaw, but. Well, I think, I think it's probably better to have signage regardless even who finds that it's clear, so that, you know, people, there's no confusion.
So if I just add my context to it, is I feel. That the the riders, the joyers of the sport, they should be getting their enjoyment out of, out of the village. Streets and roads and trails. So I really don't mind if you have them a really defined streets where they can actually go on with very strict limitations. But I do want to point out that I I don't know if the other hamlets villages should be included. Because there's a lot less streets and options for them to get around.
Yeah.
Areas. So like, if you took it, for example, these scholars, you said they weren't allowed in the hamlet, there'd be no way of connecting the other roads. So I think it should give people village property and Merrifield.
The urban area. Mr. Chair, if I may, I think the discussion that we had is because we have identified snowmobile routes that are signage. And the Brock Street is, uh, is that, uh, access for gas. We enhance the ATV to try and encourage them to use Reed Street up in HF McLean. Uh, Charlotte Street's been brought up in the conversation a numerous amount of time. Nobody at this table supported. A route that went up the County Road forty three onto Charlotte Street. We all said the direct route into gas and food. Gas and food. And we extended that route to hook up with. Reed Street and to redirect them out there. So any other route other than what we identify. That they're using, that becomes a policing and a bylaw issue. And we can't force anybody to do it with a. Uh, you know, issuing tickets, but we can identify and work with the clubs and say. This is what we would prefer that you do and ninety percent of them are cooperative. Uh, I've witnessed a few ATV's up and down. Uh, some of these streets that are of concern and, uh, they're locals. And I monitor probably five days a week. I'm in the village many times because a lot of people complain and say things are happening. But I have only witnessed locals doing it. So I've seen the clubs come in. I've watched what they're doing. Most of them are respectful, you know, and as far as the noise is concerned, you put somebody on Harley Davidson and. You know, uh, we're not going to ban motorcycles, so.
I'm just gonna get, we did not agree to send them off like side, side streets. It was just an initial, what the initial vote was about was allowing them across the bridge. And approaching the county. That's all it was. Okay, this is a proposal to keep them out of the downtown core, out of the, uh, or out of the built up, uh, the residential areas. Almost all the side streets have no sidewalks and there never were roads. So there, yeah, there is, if they, if you bypass a main, main west down Reed up, uh, fifteen down HF McLean. Doing convenience, they, they're up for a ride, so that's not an inconvenience. Or straight up Saint Lawrence, it turned up HF McLean, that's the exact same distance. There. So tho- those also provide them access to the gas, which by the way, we don't owe them. But that also provides them access of the gas. So that's what we're saying is keep them off all the side streets. And they think still, there's still ways of accessing, um, accessing the trails. And with how, why, how you can tell someone, they're wearing helmets and, and they're in. In groups of, these gentlemen can tell you better how, how many drive by, but as I said, keep them out of the side streets of the village. There are ways to do it. So that's what, um.
Yep, so. So we make sure we give staff clear direction. I believe we want them to bring back the clear routes where they would be allowed.
Yeah.
And if I had support from, uh, the rest of the council, I'd, I'd recommend taking out the other hamlets out of the bylaw.
It is, yeah. I mean, uh, Mr. Chair to Counselor Girls. Point. Uh, we haven't passed a, a bylaw identifying specific routes. What we did is we. We put forward some recommendations and this bylaw is what we're bringing back today to approve. And I agree. As at that meeting, I said we should be able to go straight down Saint Lawrence and access. I don't agree with going on the side streets. Important part is access to gas and food. It was to getting the support of the connect, uh, the county for that extended route. So, uh, and it was after the fact that we got that. So I mean. I think direct route coming in and using Saint Lawrence all the way down to the end to HF McLean and redirecting. Uh, usage to Reed Street, if that's what they so desire to do. I think is, is the best approach because no matter what neighborhood we put them through, people are going to complain HF. People on HF McLean are going to start to complain. People on Reed Street are going to start to complain. You know, it doesn't matter, uh, but what we choose. It'll be, uh. A complaint of somebody, but we need to do direct. Shortest direct route. That's what we need to do.
Alright, so if we're ready to move forward.
Yeah.
I'll call a vote. All those in favor? Mr. Kane, you know what?
Very simple.
We're clear?
Absolutely.
Okay. Right three, watch the video.
Resolved by digging a big ditch.
In respect to time, I think you should request fifteen minute extension in this case we run over. Uh, they're three months away right now. So we, I guess we would do that with a show of hands. Show of hands, sir? So we're getting near the end.
Okay, we've been here for four hours, but, uh.
That's okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk fast.
Alright.
I think the next ones are pretty light. Alright, so, uh, nine point five point seven, committee recruitment update recommendation. The committee of the whole received for information, the update recommendation report for committee recruitment. And further that committee recruitment, or fifth committee recommend to council that the recruitment be paused for committees. And be reevaluated when the strategic plan and its priorities have been set. Do I have a mover and a seconder?
I'll move.
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments from councillors?
None.
Alright. All in favor? Alright, passed. Uh, nine point five point eight, update community coalition. That the committee of the whole received for information, the. Community coalition update provided by CAO Plumley. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Move, move. Second. Any questions or comments from committee? None? Alright, we'll, uh, ask for a vote.
You had a look on your face.
Yeah, sorry.
It's gas.
I just thought of it asking, uh, our CAO if, if this could have gone under the, uh. The, uh.
What was, that was one of the issues we talked about at the meeting is we want to kind of keep this as a. As a current document that people read. Sometimes in a consent agenda, it falls through. So I think for the first little while anyway, it's nice to have it identified in a, in a specific line item. For their sake.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Okay. I'll call a vote. All in favor? Okay, passed. Uh, ten discussion items. Speeding, ten point one speeding on County Road sixteen through Jasper, Council Island. I will ask Council Island to provide some background discussion. Topic for the committee.
Yes, thank you. So. Another recent complaint about speeding through Jasper on County Road sixteen. And I'm well aware it's an issue. Um, we've all driven through there and we know that, uh. That route is used by large trucks, uh, a, a lot of traffic through there. Um, the trucks are typically going from Smith Falls and north of there. Uh, and using that as a shortcut to four oh one east to go to Montreal and so on. So they, they come down seventeen, sixteen, forty one and fifteen to get to Maitland and then to, uh, on the, the highway. So, um, I think we need to. The, the whole idea is to ask county through staff what. What traffic calming measures could be considered for the hamlet because it's, I wouldn't want to have. A little family of kids right on that road because it's, it's nuts there at times.
Yes, we are.
If only, if we can move this into a motion for the upcoming council meeting because traffic calming measure is something. That have come up for other areas of the, of the village of the municipality, you can maybe come up with a. Um, ideas for traffic. There are a lot of ideas to come up with, which would be applicable to Jasper as well as to other areas. And maybe, would, would you want to do with like a notice of motions? We bring it up to the next meeting to actually come up with traffic calming ideas?
Wasn't the intent. Um, I was wanting to simply start the process through staff with the county and, uh. I know they're already thinking about that. And so whether it gets added to an existing initiative. They're doing for us or a separate one. I don't know how that, how they see that, but.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think, uh, uh, putting a, a notice of motion, uh, on an agenda for us. And sending to the county and requesting that we're looking at, uh, opportunities. And that we want, uh, we want the county to look at some of the measures that they could apply. So if we get an official request at the county from a municipality, it brings the attention of the whole, uh, county council. Not just out of staffing. So we'd move it through quicker as we've done similarly here with some other requests. Uh, I, I would suggest that that would be the best way forward. That way we're putting, uh, forward a letter of support from this council. For county to, uh, to, uh. Put initiatives in to start to better manage the traffic on that county road.
If I can piggyback on your initiative, uh, Mr. Counselor Ireland, I've also heard complaints about, um, engine brakes. Through the light going off as they're slowing down in Jasper, so that I can piggyback on the speeding. And I'll be under the, the traffic calming measures. I think that would be well appreciated by all of the residents.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And, uh. We've initiated a forty kilometer hour zone within the urban area of the village. Is that translating out to the hamlets as well on the side streets off the county road? Is that something that we're doing? And have we moved that initiative forward?
Yes.
Because I've got a, a couple of requests from people on HF McLean. The village is at forty, but how come HF McLean's still at fifty? It's just a matter, we just haven't got there yet.
Oh, so sort of back to Jasper, the gateway signs are up, uh, so that's forty in the village. Here it is. Um, in the speed study, so the map does not include HF McLean. That's still fifty. It's the, the. The gateway signs that are. Well, I, I can. I can write an email to show you where they are or if you guys know where they are. But HF McLean, no, that wasn't included in that speed study to be produced.
So perhaps maybe something that we need to look at, uh, further down the road is how we're going to start to enhance and move that. Opportunity out because I know there, there's some people on HF McLean that are concerned that they're still fifty and the village is forty and. Half that road is within the urban area. So half of HF McLean is Merrifield, the village, and the other half is. The rural area, so.
I know it was, it was discussed during the speed study and it, it didn't warrant.
Just, like, there's been a question. I'm just looking for a staff answer.
Operation, yes.
I think conditions. The way to the sidelines and the, yeah.
So now moving forward with, with this discussion item, did you want, Mr. Counselor Ireland, did you want to turn this into a notice of motion?
Clerk, clerk wouldn't mind working with me and reminding me for the next meeting. This notice of motion, that'd be great.
Alright, so, uh, I'll move on to number eleven, if that's fine with everybody. Um, notice of motion, does any, uh, any member of committee have a notice of motion to bring forward other than the one we just discussed? Seeing none, I'll move on to number twelve, announcements, the statements from members, does any member of committee have an announcement or statement to make?
I'm sorry, Ireland? I do, if I can, uh, remember what it was now, because we've talked about so many things today.
Was it about the timing of?
There were two things. One of them was that. And so we had. An agreement basically for. So I had a previous motion, let me back up. Previous notice of motion. That I wanted to at least discuss at committee of the whole, what the implications to staff would be of moving up the issuance of. The meeting materials to a week before versus the Wednesday before. So we've had some back and forth between myself, CAO and the clerk on. Potential other solutions and one of them being that, uh. If reports are received and. I've seen them two, three, four weeks in advance of the meeting. The, the date on them, right? And we don't actually receive it until four days before the meeting. It really. Puts a rush on us to understand, review the report and understand it. So if we could get those sent out to us earlier, staff has agreed that. That's workable and, uh, that'll take a lot of the pressure off of that, that few days right before the meeting. And does anyone remember what they own first?
One of the public meetings prior to the start of.
Oh. Do we need to discuss that or is that just?
I can just make, I can make a note of it. So Counselor Ireland mentioned previously about. Um, public meetings for zoning by law files. Um, we've been including them as a part of committee of the whole meetings, just as the schedule. But due to timing and conversations at committee of the whole. He requested if we could have them as a special meeting prior to committee of the whole meeting. So starting at two thirty, let's say with committee whole starting at three. Um, we have a couple upcoming in October, which the notices have already been sent out for. So I said going forward, um, I can assure that we'll have quorum for the two thirty start beforehand. And we can try that going forward.
Was that, we don't need to amend the procedure by like that?
No, 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 it would just be a matter of scheduling a special meeting to hold, hold the public meeting.
Great, thank you.
There's no other announcements or statements? I will move on to thirteen, full, full session, there are fourteen, resume, fifteen adjournment. That the ma- that the committee of the whole adjourned, uh. Six oh seven PM. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Second and second. Call them, all in favor? Alright, carry.